Good morning guys, sorry for the delay. It's not technical or anything on that nature. We are just trying to see whether most students could join in because we hear there is some power issue in some areas. So we will give about another couple more minutes and we will start it up. Yeah. Thank you for your patience. Just hang on for a minute. Yeah, and we will give about other two, three minutes and then we will start. Thank you. I have been doing this revisions or whatever you call for, I think more than fifteen sessions, I think so. I do expect some results and hope that has supported the students. So that's why probably the institute calls me over and over again to deliver these sessions with you all. My task always been not predicting any questions on this case study and neither try to give you some suggested answers or whatever. Okay, so that is out of the equation. Okay, my attempt is to open your minds to different options. Yeah, to open your mind with different options like you could see the topic itself. It says the background of corporate and business development strategies which is required currently to the your case main organization. Yeah, so that is what we are to see. Because the organization has grown from a single entity into a multi-tasked, multi-focused organization into a different stream, diversified, non-related. Change in requirements, changing in times. Where the current situation is volatile and not knowing where they are heading. And taking up the challenges in that kind of a situation. You could see where the organization is trying to head. And probably whether our investment decisions are right, whether the investment decisions are wrong, whether we could go ahead and invest, whether how does the organization future will be looking at is the subject, I believe, surrounding this particular case. This particular case is, you know, it's a very unique case I would see in the comparatively to the past cases. They have given you a very big tool already. Okay. They have already given, they have already saved you a lot of your time. You know, looking at a SWOT analysis because generally that is where you should be starting your work to do. But that's a quite, what I would say is quite a very short-lived, primitive kind of a SWOT analysis which has been produced. So I would request you all to enlarge it, add more details into it while going through the case. So that's one of my tasks is to for you all to look into that. So because then we will be seeing what we could do with that SWOT analysis, how we could create strategic options and how we could evaluate them in implementation and so forth. So that's my plan with you all for next eight to nine hours. So you need to be with me. Probably you all could raise questions, put your hands up. I'm not seeing the complete screen. I'm just, I'm on my, I'm close my video because of the band issues and things like that. So I'm also running on up. There's no power in my area, but I'm running with my mobile connections and my laptop power on. Yeah, so that which I was prepared for it. Right, so be there even if I just log, get logged out. Be there, I will be back in couple of minutes with my other laptop on and so forth. So everybody goes through the situation. So we need to adjust accordingly. Right, okay. So what is this, what is this corporate strategy, what is this? What is this, the strategic management is about what we know or what we want to know? Yeah. I'm using Johnston-Reddington scores model which is in your KZ5. I know KZ5 very well because I developed KZ5. So this is something taken from that particular model. This is understanding the strategic point of your organization where you stand. So that's what I said, SWOT is an ideal tool which combines two major analysis, that's your external and internal analysis. So which gives you where you stand. Okay, who we are, where do we, where are we? That's one to understand. So understanding that, then you need to create choices. Yeah, you need to create choices. You need to create what we could do, right? Then, once we decide what we could do, then we had to go and make our our strategy in action. Yeah, we had to implement it, right? So this is, this is the, this is the plan. So let's, this is what we will be going through in this time period. So let's see how it goes. And just to give you a rough idea of what the plan is, probably I will be covering the theoretical perspective for today. And from wherever I could bring in the examples, I would bring in the CHS examples. But tomorrow, halfway through, I will be switching on to the entire case. So that we will, we can look at the case in a summary nutshell to identify and link with the theoretical perspective. So that you know, we would know what is in the case itself, right? So don't be disappointed that if I don't talk everything about the case because my task is to finish up this background for you so that now you all can make use of this information, this knowledge in your, applying in your case because application is the key. Right? So this is a model as I was saying, but I've been used, I'm sure most of you have gone through that and you have learned from your tutors. Let's see the way I see this particular model to go on with. Yeah, so you have the strategic question, your strategic choices and strategic action. So we'll try to cover most of the areas in this so that you know the, where we could make use of the relevant areas in our, in the case. As I said, the strategic question is to see what would impact our strategy. Yeah, what will impact the CHL strategy? What other area, what other things that will impact CHL strategy? They are given very specifically, they are given from your SWOT analysis, what they have produced, they are very specifically given reasons, right? They are very specifically given points where they are talking about the, what impacts the strategy from the external aspect of it. And also they are talking about the internet capabilities, pretty good resources CHL has. Okay, pretty, pretty good ones. And they have been, they are made use of it. Yeah, so that's why they are in the present position and especially the management willing to take risks, the entrepreneurial skills what they have, yeah, the calculated risk what they take off with. The resources what they have, the people, yeah, the people who come from different background, different areas, develop different perspectives and take over and grow the company. Probably currently they might be facing a little bit of a withdrawn of the people. Yeah, like people leaving the board, the people leaving because of the certain decisions what they are making off with, right? Without saying that, you know, they're not going along with the decision, but they are citing, you know, they want to retire and things like that. So now these are the, these are the complications that you would have. These are the few complications that they have talked about. So when we look at the case, then we can, you can start linking with these areas. Yeah. You know, strategic question also would look at the expectation, yeah? Expectation of your stakeholders and especially for CHL, CHL is well-connected and also CHL has two major families involvement. Yeah. And we could see some new faces coming in and traditionally which has been a well-cultured, family-run business now turning into a multi, you know, stakeholder organization. That's where the cultural change and culture of the organization comes into play. Right? So this is, this are, and you know, how do we manage culture? How do we manage the expectation of our stakeholder? To go on and so forth. So probably this area something that you know, we can, which I have seen, which I'm seeing in the case. Yeah, so this is, that's what I'm, that's what I said, I try to narrate it or relate it with the, with the present case situation. Yeah. So let's take one by one and these four areas and we will try to quickly go through. I'm not going to go into detail because I'm sure you all have already studied. But then I'm trying to link it up for you to understand what, how this is formed and what need to be identified. So the strategic choices would involve wants to understand your position. Where your organization need to go. Yeah, so that's where you need to understand. So not only the understanding, the understanding should come into, come in both levels. That is your business level as well as on your corporate level, right? So that's why we need to understand what this corporate strategies and business strategy means. Right? And especially in your case, in this particular case, there is a very clear evidence that you know, the corporate level decisions also has to be made and the business level decisions also has to be made. Right? So now, what do we do? Yeah, where do we grow? What are the options that we have? Yeah, which direction that we take? So how do we manage our growth part on what is the portfolio that we need to handle? Yeah, now these are like at the corporate level, right? And what are the pricing strategy would be? What is my competitive strategy that I'm going to take off with? Am I, am I going to compete them on quality or I'm going to compete them with the pricing? Or am I going to compete them on hybrid mode? Yeah. So these are fundamental questions which you will be asking and we will try to link the SBUs of CHL and see what they do and what, what, what future looks for them. Then obviously we need to, now we need to identify on the choices like on which way we are going to grow, yeah, the development part, yeah, and on which direction we are going to take. So are we going to go on market penetration or product development, market development or diversification? We could clearly see the CHL has the ability and it has shown interest in diversifying its business. It was moving on and acquiring, establishing, you know, the, at a certain, certain level. Then they were more going on a horizontal diversification. And you know, and now they are looking for even unrelated diversification to go on with. Yeah. So this is, this is where, you know, we could start linking up these models and you know, the choices that your CHL should make. Yeah. So that will involve the choice, would involve at the business level, as I said, your cost, quality combination. At the corporate level, the portfolio, what you handle, the direction what you take, the way you grow, where you approach your international businesses and so forth. That's your international level, whether you want to export, whether you want to have an agency over there, whether you want to or completely go for a greenfield investment. Yeah. Innovation, you could see plenty of innovations coming up with CHL. Plenty of research element in their core business as well as on the, on the respective area where the people like themly has interest in the agricultural aspect of it. So you could see there are plenty to talk about in this particular case itself. Yeah. Then we need to evaluate them. This is something that I've seen in this case. I'm not looking, I'm not seeing, the data is there. But then I talked about the evaluation aspect of it. So evaluation, we will try to work with the SAF criteria, SAF criteria to see whether the project, what we propose or the strategy that we want to implement, whether that will, whether that is properly evaluated. Yeah. Finally, the strategy in action, strategy in action is like you need to implement the case. So probably I will be talking about the model canvas of implementation. So if anybody wants to draw up, you know, how the final strategy to be implemented, you can make use of that model. You know, it definitely covered nine major elements including the revenue and the cost, the unique selling proposition, your customer segment, your key partners, the key activities and so forth. Right? So that's, that's something that you know, you could take home and see how you could make use of it for the implementation. Now, this is where I started by saying right at the start that go for your case with the absolute open mind. Don't try to predict things. Yeah. But of course you could automatically, you know, that's human nature that you try to, you know, see. And I'm sure you all would have worked with your tutors or you know, the other, other seminars that have worked on certain scenarios. It doesn't matter. But my request is forget the solutions when provided in those scenarios. Yeah. Take the method from those scenarios, what, what, what they have done, how do we, how do they go about? So whether that will match with your final unseen elite. Yeah, that is the most critical thing. So you go with your blocked framework of mind, you get stuck. Believe me, I know, I have experience. So that's, that's, that is definitely not a, not a very good sign. Yeah. When, when I, when I did my SEMA, I never failed any exams. Okay, I completed every paper on the first attempt, went move on and we love to do our final exam for the first time, for the final exam with all four subjects could be attempted. Yeah. Well, I went for a seminar. Okay, I went for a seminar organized by the institute. And there was a British girl who came down and you know, he was talking about the case. And he insisted that you know, we should have a cash flow, you know, in our case. So I, I, I hate this accounting work. Okay, I love the management accounting, but the accounting work. So I had to memorize it at that moment because I didn't know head or tail about how it was created. Right? So what did I do? I went for the exam, dumped that first. Okay, took good 20 minutes out of me. Yeah. Memorize, dump it. Right? So dump that first. Then now I'm trying to see how that will be linking into my unseen material. Yeah, which is no way what I've done is required. So it's just waste of time, waste of energy. I'm trying to now link like my car. Yeah, I'm trying to see whether that I could link it up. In the process, I came out, I marked myself after three hours of exams. Okay. I marked myself and I marked me 49. So that's the result I got. I went through the other strategy papers, but I failed my case study. So that point, I realized that you know, I would have just gone with absolute open mind. I would have gained that one mark by without wasting that 20, 25 minutes only on that stupid cash flow. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a one-off page cash flow. Yeah. It was not necessary for me to do it. Like, you know, because it's all on fixed framework of mind. Okay, so don't go with that. Right? Of course, next, next one, I got the Sri Lankan price, that's a different story. Yeah. So but you know, this is, this is where I always believe go with the open mind for your case studies. Yeah. Understand what the background is, understand what the options that you have, understand how you could implement the strategies. Then even you get a totally different scenario in your unseen. You are ready, you are geared to recreate those strategies, not try to implement the strategies what you already have worked on. Work on those strategies fine for now, but forget when you go. Yeah. Forget those solid options that you have created. Remember only the way you went about, remember only the way you approached it, remember only the way, why you approached it that way. Because different strategies need different types of approaches. So try and understand the tools, try to understand the case, then you get into an absolute win-win situation. Right? So in strategy in action, we can look at the structure because I could see there was a very simple structure of CHL. So probably you might have to now redo the structure again. And from my knowledge, then you can understand how the structure would look like, the organizational processes. You know, how the, you know, the processes should take through and also how do you manage your change? Yeah. So the change management perspective, there are few incidents or few areas that it has been cited in the case. So probably we'll have a discussion on that as well. Fourteen questions which I always ask my strategist. You get stuck, believe me, I, I know, I have experience, so that's, that's, that is a. Definitely not a, not a very good sign, yeah? When, when I, when I did my same, I never failed any exams, okay? I, I completed every paper on the first attempt, went move on. And we love to do our final exam. For the first time, for the final exam with all four subjects could be attempted, yeah? Well. I, I, I went for a seminar, okay, I went for a seminar organized by the institute. And there was a, a British girl who came down and, you know, he was talking about. The, the case and he insisted that, you know, we should have a cash flow. You know, in our case, so. I, 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 I hate this accounting work, okay? I, I love the management accounting, but, but all the accounting work. So I had to memorize it at that, at that moment because I didn't know head or tail about how it was created, right? So what did I do? I went for the exam, dumped that first, okay, took good twenty minutes out of me, yeah? Memorize, dump it, right? So dump that first. Then now I'm trying to see how that will be linking into my unseen material. Yeah, which is no way what I've done is, is required. So it's just waste of time, waste of energy, I'm trying to now link like my car, yeah? I'm trying to see whether that I could link it up. In the process, I, I came out, I marked myself after three hours of exams, okay? I marked myself and I marked me forty-nine, so that's the results I got. I, I went through the other strategy papers, but I failed my case study. So that point, I'm, I realized that, you know, I would have just gone with absolute open mind. I would have gained that one mark by without wasting that twenty, twenty-five minutes only on that stupid. Cash flow, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a one, one-off page cash flow, yeah? It was not necessary for me to do it, like, you know, because it, it's all on fixed framework of mind, okay? So don't go with that, right? Of course, next, next one, I got the Sri Lankan price, that's a different story, yeah? So but, you know, this is, this is where I, I always believe, go with the open mind for your case studies, yeah? Understand what the background is, understand what the options that you have, understand how you could implement the strategies. Then even you get a totally different scenario in your unseen. You are ready, you are geared to recreate those strategies, not try to implement the strategies what you. Already have worked on, work on those strategies, fine, for now, but forget when you go, yeah? Forget those solid options that you have created. Remember only the way you went about, remember only the way you approached it, remember only the, the way, why you approached it that way. Because different strategies need different types of approaches. So try and understand the tools, try to understand the case, then you get into a absolute win-win situation. Right? So in strategy connection, we'll, we can look at the structure, because I could see there was a very simple structure of CHL, so probably. You might have to now redo the structure again. And for my knowledge, then you can understand how the structure would look like, the organizational processes. You know, how the, you know, the, the processes would, should take through. And also, how do you manage your change, yeah? So the change management perspective, there are few. Incidents or a few areas that it has been cited in the case. So probably we'll have a discussion on that as well. Fourteen questions, which I always. Ask my strategy students to answer, because this will give you the formation. Of your strategy, yeah? What are the environmental opportunities and threats? What are the organizations, ten and big tests, so you could see that you have already getting on that, your work which goes on with. By saying this is your O and P and this is your S and W, right? So now you know what this is. Then also you are, you are looking at. You know, the, the fundamental purpose. Why? Your vision, your mission, yeah? So why your existence, right? And also, the cultural perspective, you could see it was a, a, a family-run business. It was a family-run business now, which turns into coming, bringing in new people coming in, yeah? So they were looking at, they were even, they were even praised, you know, for their. Understanding each other very well, yeah? So all those perspectives were there in that particular culture, now probably the culture changes with the expansion, right? So fundamental things, the questions that you need to ask. So what culture would require in the future? Yeah, what do we require in the future to go off it? Right, then you get into the other areas. So once you identify that, then you get into your. How does the, your, your business unit should compete? You have a different units now. You're looking at power, you're looking at hydropower, then you're looking at, you know. The. Wind power, now you're looking at. What do you call the agriculture, then you're looking at hotels now. See the diversified portfolio, how does these people should operate? Yeah, on what basis? Pricing? Do you have anything to do with the pricing in the power sector? Or somebody else decide on the pricing? So if you want to make better, better revenue, then your cost should be lower. Because if you can't decide on your price, then your top line is not going to grow. Because you have set output, you can't increase the output the way you like it. So that's set output. Thousand five hundred kilowatts into ten, twelve turbines, they're looking at. And you're saying sixteen megawatts, so that's, that's what you are going to produce. To the, for example, okay, I'm just giving you for example, so that, that your output is fixed. And your pricing is determined by the government, the pricing is determined by, you know, probably you could negotiate. But once that is fixed, that is fixed, you can't be increasing. So how do you make better profits? The better profits comes from your better cost management, yeah? So now, on what basis that we should compete, yeah? And what is your business portfolio should look into? Yeah, what is your business portfolio should be looking into, what, what is your? We, we, we'll use BCG metrics or we will use a G-matrix to understand the type of portfolio that we should carry, yeah? Now, these are the things that, you know, we'll be looking with the case, right? So the, which will be doing, doing tomorrow, yeah? How do we compete internationally, we are looking, we are looking international, okay, we, we, Gomez wants to take overseas, yeah? So we believes that we have talent to go off it, so on, on which side that, with the experience, how do we move overseas? Whether we are innovating appropriately, lot of innovations happening here, yeah? Should the organization buy other companies, align or go with it? So the way they grow, is it organic growth? Is it inorganic, inorganic will involve mergers and acquisition, yeah? So what are they, if they are going to go alone, it's organic growth? If you are to buy other organizations, align, mergers and acquisition, or you can become strategic partners. So these are the tools that we can identify and go, so these are the questions general and a layman would ask. So we would see in different areas what we operate, so you could see the options what we have for CHL. Then, once we decide on that, then we need to see whether it is, whether the strategies are suitable, yeah? Whether the strategies are acceptable and feasible, so let, we, we need to understand what this is, now this is what I said, the SAF criteria. Yeah, I like to bring this E part in, although that is not there in that model, I'd like to bring that particular element in. Because of the environmental issues, yeah? Environmental issues because we saw at the one stage about this wind. Power generation, we saw the sound pollution was not considered. Okay, that's the environmental issue. So we are not cost for that sound pollution, yeah, nobody realizes that, yes, or something like that on that nature. So we need to, we need to see, you know, the options now, that, that is, that is where I'm trying to plug in these elements in, yeah? Then the type of structure what you require, we saw some basic fundamental structure, what, what has been proposed, so whether, how the new structure will look like. Right? What are the changes that they need to make? Now you could see that the experienced people want to move away, yeah? Then where do we stand, how does, how do they feel on, on what basis? And the process, yeah? And the process, how do we get that approved? So these are the elements that we, we see in, in, in the complete picture. And if you see, if you ask this fundamentally fourteen questions that you would identify. Your, whether that's the strategic question, your strategic choices and strategic action, now this is. Even if you don't do anything on this case. Try and find answers to these fourteen questions, you know, same, okay? You should be able to, you should be able to fit, you should be able to at least get involved by fifty percent, you should be able to be fine, right? Okay. Right, any questions up to now, guys, any questions up to that particular point, yeah? Any, any, any questions up to that particular point that you need to understand? Or any, any question up to that particular point that you need to ask me? Generally, generally, when, when people are silent, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm worried a little bit more, yeah? Whether the message went across, whether it's been accepted or whether it is rejected, I don't know, yeah? So, but knowing my Sri Lankan students for quite some time now. I do understand that you're like, okay, not, not, not very bad. But you're like, okay, on average, yeah, so I, I'm going to assume that and move on, right? So let's look at these four elements on your strategy, so let's start off with the purpose, how it goes. So purpose is governed by three major elements, okay? Your strategic purpose has been influenced by three elements, one, your governance structure, right? Two, your stakeholder expectation, three, your social responsibility and ethics. Now, if you ask me what comes first, it's all three are equal. And that's why you could see that there is no hierarchical structure that they have laid in influencing these strategic purposes, okay? They're not going in a, a process or they're not gone in, they're not, you know. Said, you know, this should be addressed first and this is addressed second and so forth, so. So all three elements becomes quite important, okay? So if you look at the stakeholders, stakeholders, there are plenty, okay? I would love to, love you all to identify the relevant stakeholders for your case. Yeah, relevant stakeholders for your case. And I want to identify the relevant stakeholders who has bigger impact. Yeah, who, who would have a bigger impact, bigger impact in the sense of interest and power, yeah? I, I'm sure, I'm sure the government would have a bigger impact. Because we could see the influence what they could force on the organization, right? Now, most of the other cases what we have handled, we don't see government. Playing a major role like in this particular case. So government influence is very high, okay? Because in, in deciding the, you know, the, the tenders deciding on. The quality of the, on, on, on their sales, because they are the main people, they are the main buyers of yours. So then, you know, you, you need to be and, and single buyer, okay? So that's, that's a, that's a most dangerous perspective as well, okay? A single buyer, right? So that, that's something that you need to take care, like that you have to see who makes the biggest impact, right? My suggestion would be to look at the eighty-twenty rule, okay? Eighty-twenty rule, which is like twenty percent of the people who gives you this eighty percent of your headache. Right? So you, you need to manage, if you manage this twenty percent, then you're fine, okay? Now, I believe even at a crunch time, this is what we should do. Yeah, we should see which twenty percent, which twenty percent would impact the eighty percent. If I address this twenty percent of my issues, I'm solving eighty percent of the issues, so which is like absolutely brilliant. Yeah, so here we need to identify which groups or which elements in those groups. Have that influence over the CHL, yeah? I, I'm sure the owners, the shareholders would have a bigger role to play, yeah? Political groups, hmm, suppliers. Yes and no, so you need to identify whether there are enough suppliers, less suppliers. Because if the suppliers are limited, then you might have to hang on with them. We saw the competitors, there are different people who are in different businesses. Now, the new business what they're going to get in also would have, they have enough competitors on, so. Will they make a huge impact? Will they have that say, now this is what you need to identify, yeah? The customers, as I said, here your customer is mostly in, in power, it's the, it's your government. Yeah, power is your government, so the rest that you will have to decide who are the customers as well. Your employees talk quite less about the employees. Because now this is where I, I believe we are looking at more of a corporate level rather than a business level. So the corporate decides most of the things, yeah? Employees. No much talk about, so now you could, now you could see, right? In, in your case, like where they have concentrated more, where they talk more, where they talk more, where they concentrated more. And where they have, where they have analyzed, you know, they're talking about more elements in, yeah? Give me a minute, guys. Sorry, just switch off the phone. Right? Now, the, one of the biggest reason that we need to identify. The stakeholders is, is the, is to manage the expectation. Yeah. So managing the expectation, because they conflict with each other. So what do you, what do you, what do you need, what do you, what do you, what do you, what do you actually? How do, what, what do you take first ones? What are the first issues that you will be looking at? So that's why I said, like, you know, the, if you could get on with that eighty-twenty rule, then, then you will know exactly what need to be managed on a. An important basis, yeah? If you see the expectation. Employees wants more salary. Customers wants better pricing. Shareholders wants more profits. Government wants their taxes and the employment to be maintained. Trade union wants high wages. So if you're looking at lower price for your satisfaction of your customers. You might lose margins. If you lose margins, you might not be able to pay high wages to your employees. If you lose margins and if you pay higher wages to employees, the shareholders returns are going to get shrunk. The shareholders are not going to be happy about it, right? So the new investments are not going to come in because you can't retain more profits on. We could see in, 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 in this particular case also, Gomez's idea of. Handoff dividends payment has sparked. Not so happy environment with Sanaa, I believe I'm getting the names correct. Because Sanaa is not involved in the board, yeah? So, so he obviously is. That the, the, the only return that you could get is the, from the dividends. So if the dividends are not paid regularly, then he's not going to get his income, others have a, others have to be drawing from the organization, not Sanaa. Yeah, in any way, so then that's, that's, that's where this, the whole issue could come in as well, yeah? So you could, you could, you could see if you knew started employing your capital. The jobs may be lost, the government might not like it, the trade unions might not like it. Yeah, losing jobs, but then the efficiency would increase a better profits, the lower cost, yeah? And the capital investments, the missionaries would work longer hours. Than the employees. Because of the fatigue matter. So you could see the, there'll be a lot of complaints coming in, yeah? A lot of conflicts coming in between these, these stakeholders. So it's, it's task to identify who they are, that's why we need to map them, yeah? As I said earlier, you could map them on. The, their interest and power using mentalos window, that we could identify. Whom that we should be take care of, right? You could very clearly see the, 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 the key. You could very clearly see the, the, the key players. Now, these are the players that we need to make sure that we keep them happy. These, these are the players, I call them eighty percent, the eighty percent of the impact comes from these players, right? This may be, you can give one percent of your time to them, yeah? Make sure you keep inform certain category of people, yeah? Don't make them to come to this particular point, because their level of interest is already high. So maybe their power is low for the moment, so they could increase their power and come here, right? Like your minority stakeholders, which we don't see much in this particular case, yeah? There are certain groups that you need to keep them satisfied. Their power is already high, like your government, their power is pretty high, okay? And already they have moved into this particular key players because of the interest. Because they have the interest of the project being success. Because this is a national problem, what you are facing off it, the national issues, yeah? So, so you could see there are, there are the ways that you can identify. So I would, I would love you all if you could jot down and see who would be playing in these particular areas, in this particular, who need to be taken care of more, who need to be, who, who could be not ignored, but then just minimal effort, yeah? In other words, it's ignored, but then you have to keep them there, right? Whatever, whatever the reasons may be, where do you put your environmental groups coming in and so forth, yeah? So this is, on this way that you could see who are the people that you need to take care of. Fundamentally questions, ask these questions, then you will find the answers. Whose expectation to be prioritized? Can we actually see their power? Can we actually see their interest? Some people we don't identify, because we don't know their, either their power or their interest. So by doing mapping them, then we will realize and identify how it works, yeah? How it works? And we can identify who are the facilitators who would support with our strategy and would block it. Is it better to reposition certain people? If you can remove some, you know, the key players and put them on to use their power and keep their interest on, that's better, but then generally it doesn't work that way. How, how can you hang on and maintain them? So few questions I'm throwing in because I want you all to find the answers that, yeah? If you see the power, power could be in, in, in different ways. You could draw it from within your organization and you could draw it for outside the organization. Within the organization, you could see the hierarchy, this is your formal power, yeah, where you can make decisions. I believe Gomez has plenty of power on this. So you have this formal power, you have the influence power. Dr. Sharma. Calling off the strategic resources, the resource power. The version of knowledge and skills. So probably the engineer who, who goes on to the board representation. Yeah, that's, that's his knowledge, isn't it? So where you could control, so you can identify people who has these powers within the organization and externally. Involvement in strategy implementation, that's probably the government. The ministers. The, the last one through internal link, yes? And also now you, even the trade unions might come into play. You could see what's happening in this context. So these are a few things that you need to identify. And while identifying this, you will know who are the people who are to be taken care of. So yeah, you can identify the people, now this is where we, we, I, I said, sometimes we don't know or we can't identify the people's power and their interest, so you could see the, the even if they have the status, they have their claim on resources, if they, if they can be represented and if they are the symbols, yeah, so then you, you know that, you know, they, they have that power to work through it. Now let's look at the environment now. Quickly on the environment, if you are looking at what surrounds the organization, within the organization itself, there's a, there's an internal environment, okay? So internal environment would, you will be talking about your internal capabilities. Yeah, internal capabilities is your resources and your competencies, right? So we'll come to that as well, the internal perspective, so let's look at the outside perspective. Looking at the macro aspect of it, which is common to all, okay? Which is common, the, the macro perspective is common to all, everyone. All industries, yeah? All industries, to everyone it is common, now say for example, your exchange rate. Yeah, the exchange rate is common to everyone. Now, you need to identify the impact of exchange rate into your organization. So certain elements might not be, might not be impacting you negatively. Yeah, certain elements could, it could give you an opportunity to grow, right? It's not a threat always. So if you are an importer, then you have a problem now. But if you are exporter, you are on a better weekend. Yeah, you are on a better weekend, because although the, the prices are, you know, the, the nobody has increased the, the, the cost factor, that is the salaries to the employees to a different level. But whereas if you, if you see that, you know, the Sri Lankan rupees lost its value by fifty percent. Yeah, almost by fifty percent, isn't it? So if it has lost by fifty percent, it has lost, then you know, the, the your, your, neither your salaries or your inputs, if it is, if the inputs are from within our country, it has not grown up by fifty percent, okay? But then now you could see whatever it's related and linked with the externality is, is being increased so much, right? Still we, we try to find answers why the local producers and what, why the local perspectives are expensive as, and you know, what we see now, that, that's a, that's a different question that you need to ask from the people who are controlling from the middle and at the end of the supply chain, not at the beginning of the supply chain, yeah? So that's, that's a, that's a different question, the people want to make money when, when everybody is in trouble as well, yeah, so that's a, that's a totally different argument and totally different perspective that people has to look into, yeah, right? Then you have the industry analysis to work off with. Industry analysis will give you an idea how interesting the industry. Now, as far as the C H L is concerned, now you could see they are on a pretty diversified environment, so they will have different industries to analyze. From agriculture to power to hotels to whatever, whatever they are looking at, okay? But for all three, all three element, this is common, yeah? All three element, the macro is common, all, everything what they do, the macro environment will be common. But the elements which are impacting would differ. The elements will differ with the impact to in different organizations, right? The industries, a- as I said, different industries you might tend to identify because this will give you an indication about the attractiveness of the industry, whether it is good. How is my competitor suffering? How the rivalry, that's my rivalry, how is my substitutes? How is my buyers, how is my suppliers? Yeah, and the new entrants, so we will we could identify and see whether it's more interesting, so this is something that we can make use of to advise C H L whether they would, they would be able to see they were able to see the, you know, the, the reason why that they are to, they can go into that particular area of investment. And our close environment, I'm looking at the competitors as well as some of my customers, yeah? So the competitors and customers whom you will be dealing with directly, right? I will explain to you further when we cover that particular area. The macro environment, we know this special framework very well, okay? And I'm, I'm sure in your syllabus, there is something called scan step as well, right? Scan step is a small deviation from pestle, it it might be better if you could look at the scan step analysis. Because there are two elements which are, which is differing from or which has been, which is added into the pestle framework, right? Scan step with eight letters, okay? S C A N S T E P, right? So it's quite similar to, the, the six elements are quite similar to the pestle elements, but two elements which are different, one is the security, okay? Security element, that is very important in, 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 in our case, yeah, in, in our case, it's very important. So look into the security element, that is like, you know, the cyber attack to physical attack, yeah? In both, so you could see even in Sri Lanka, distribution of oil that minister repeatedly says that, you know, there is violence, there is, there is, you know, unduly behavior that, you know, the oil will not be distributed into those particular areas, because that's a security issue, definitely that's a security issue, that's not a second question about it. I don't know whether they are getting covered with that, but then that's absolutely true, now. If you're, if you, if something goes wrong with that oil tank, that's about six thousand, six hundred liters or things like that. You know, you're, you're in, you're in deep trouble, because that's, that's, that's a, that's a huge, huge bomb, yeah? So you have to be absolutely careful with that, right? So so you need to be, you need to be aware, of course you can, you have to demand for your products, but then you have to be, you, you have to behave in an appropriate manner as well, yeah? The other one is your cultural perspective, okay? Because in, in the, in here we look at the social. So social is broken in scan step, social and culture, yeah? Because for C H L, the culture of the, of the country, yeah, the people. Because certain businesses are really impacted by the culture, isn't it? So you need to, you need to identify, especially the, even, even the, even the governments, okay? Governments are impacted by the culture, because different culture back on, different people, different culture back now would prefer different kinds of clothings, okay? You are, you are not going to buy something which is not suitable in your culture, right? So that's, that's, that's what it is, that's what you could see, like, you know, most of the Sri Lankans, although they have gone overseas, you could see a, a, a typical way of dressing themselves up, right? So the, which you can easily identify amongst the crowd that, you know, you are a Sri Lankan, right? So that's, that's, that's how it is. And that culture comes with your ethnicity, then we, Sri Lanka is a multi-ethnic country. And do we have any impact because of that? Do we have an impact with C H L that we need to decide, okay? That we have to see how it goes, so that's why we need to analyze to identify how it, how it works. Right, so I just touched upon, you know, the, the area in, in this particular case that you need to identify that for what is impacting you? Yeah, what, when I say what is impacting you, which element has big impact to your organization? Yeah, the, the bigger, the impact which has into your sub, your, your portfolio, right? Is it, now we are, we are looking at organic plantation, yeah? We are looking with more innovative techniques, yeah, to grow mushrooms. I'm, I'm, I'm taking one, one side, okay, I'm taking one, one area. Now, that could be linked with the, the hotel projects that we are, that we are looking at as well. Okay, that could be linked with, you know, healthy living. So the importation of availability of raw materials, say for example, availability of fertilizers might not be having a big impact to C H L's that particular segment. Yeah, we are on to renewable energies. So the oil issues, yeah? Oil issues might not have a big impact, because you are operating with turbine generators, you know, to using oil. When I mean oil is fuel, okay? So that might, although the current position that, you know, most of the, most of, you know, ninety five percent of the people get affected with this particular issue, you might not face that issue. Because you are depending on solar and you are depending on the wind, right? On the other hand, on the other hand, non-availability of the dollars might have an impact on importation of your spare parts. So that you might have an impact, right? But then I, I'm sure the influence what you could exert the relationship what you have with the government, you should be able to overcome that situation. Because this is a national priority, okay? So now these are, but in the day you are responsible. So what is important to me, the, the, look at the economic perspective, yes, in that case, C H L might be, might have an impact. Environmental perspective. We see that we have to take care of the sound, I, I don't know whether you have been into one of these windmill farms, it's, it's, you know, it's quite noisy. Quite noisy, so that's why they are located far away places, we have Quite noisy, so that's why they are located far away places where people are not, you know, they don't. Uh it it's been uh located in 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 areas where people don't gather or people are not around. Yeah, I don't know whether uh you all you all had that experience of uh you know. Hearing that uh noise of that small windmill which was installed uh. Uh right opposite uh Indian Eye Commission, I think they are called Iceland. If I'm mistaken, and now i- it has gone silent because it was making a huge noise, yeah? So now these are the problems that we don't foresee uh how this works. Because that's ideal place to have that install because you are next to the close to the sea and you know, the sea breeze, wind always. Uh always there, so it could generate, yeah, uh time to go, I believe people get will get used to it, they might install it at uh high buildings and. See how how that works, um because you know, you 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 can't be having the cake and eating the cake, yeah? So that's that's you have to make a sacrifice, no pain, no gain, yeah, so that's that's what you have to see it. Uh not only the uh factors would impact, uh you know, our. Uh portfolios, they might have an impact at different times. Hopefully, if all things go well, uh if Sri Lanka comes out of this particular situation in another. Let's say uh optimistically, another five years' time. After that, you know, we we are not going to talk about the uh you know, the 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 dollar crunch or. Uh the credit crunch or whatever it is, you know, so we will probably we can turn into a new leaf of hope, hope, hope. Uh and you know, go with our normal course of life and on on a on a better way, yeah? So then you are not going to be worried about like importation of this paper, so you know. This is happening and you know, things like that, whether the tourists will come or tourists will not come, we are not going to be bothered about it, okay? Uh it is pretty uh pretty uh different negative picture. Uh you know, the or a worse scenario being posted uh around the world with regard to the. Uh current uh situation, so uh you know, the the tourist levels have dropped down and they are dropping uh. And they are expecting it to drop further uh beyond nineteen eighty-three level. So which is uh you know, it's it's a tough tough asking, you know? Uh so we have to we have to actually identify uh who uh who the actual uh. Tourist and who are actual returnees, yeah? Uh so returnees with the so with the Australian passport or New Zealand passport or British passport or any other countries passport. Sri Lankans are coming back also, we treat as tourists, which I believe should not be the case because, you know. Uh obviously, they 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 are not going to occupy the hotels or you know, they are not going to be. Uh spending as usual, no normal as the other tourists because they know Sri Lanka better well, we have to cut corners and you know, make themselves happy, right? So identify which is uh really critical, really important, uh and identify how. Uh 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 how uh you know, these factors would have a big impact on you, yeah? The key drivers, key drivers, you know, you see the uh what would have big impact? Yeah, so I always say to see that eighty twenty rule, okay? So this is this would give you which would create. A a massive shift in my strategy if that changes, right? So that's that's very very important. The industry perspective, let's look at the industry aspect of it, of course, we use the uh uh five forces. And also the industry lifecycle, yeah, uh five forces. Which one? If you look at the potential entrance, is it is it is it feasible for uh organizations to come in? Is it possible new players to come in? Is the investment is high? The technical skills need to be there. The knowledge. Of the industry has to be there. So already we have players, that's that's a that's my competitive rivalries, already we have players operating, yeah? Uh they are looking at uh new players come in hundred thirty uh gigawatt uh megawatts. So it's not, it's open, they're looking at opportunities, so probably new players could come in. Buyers, it's only government in in Pakistan. The other cases we will see, we will we will try and I identify, uh you know, maybe tomorrow we will try to talk on the other areas, yeah? So if you are looking at power, it's basically the government. Now. You never know the way we uh move forward, okay, the way we may move forward. These bias could be the consumers directly in their future, yeah? When the power is privatized, okay, whether it is, power could be privatized, right? And where you could generate electricity from uh you know, the renewable energy. And uh you know, it the moment it takes uh ninety-five percent or ninety percent of. Uh resources, uh the the energy comes from our renewable energy, yeah, hopefully, right? Then to run that, whether you need a very strong uh uh central grid. Or whether this could be regionalized, yeah? I I'm I'm just I'm just throwing some ideas, okay, I'm just throwing some ideas, so maybe, I I don't know, because I I. Not seen the uh uh the 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 unseen paper, right? So. What would be my my stand, what will be uh how 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 we will go, because there there we. Said about, you know, uh you know, looking at newer uh energy sources, okay? And they are looking at uh you know, certain things which are already implemented in uh Japan and uh India, yeah? So we we have these uh elements uh you know, coming in. So that could they could come in the view of uh potential entrance, yeah? Or even the competitive rivalries can be uh you know, acquire uh. Uh different technologies, right? Uh whether we could. Have substitutes into our areas, which is like uh you know, for renewable energy. It's the it's your fossil fuel, okay? Uh your diesel and things like that, that that could be the substitute to go go on with, right? And probably uh for renewable energy, it's the nature is your supplier, yeah? Uh for your raw material, but for your technical materials, then you might have to depend on others to go, right? So identify like this, identify for the other areas where. CHL is expanding or CHL wants to move on, so you could have a better picture uh with how many people that you need to uh. Work with, how many people that you need to uh talk to, what are the people that you need to give priorities and so forth, yeah? The industry lifecycle is also very interesting because the way we are in our. I've second mostly uh in 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 a in a three different areas, uh we might be at different stages, yeah? Uh I'm sure when you look at the renewable energy, we are still at the uh growth stage. Because we are not making use of it, we have been uh you know, uh we have been very. Uh backward with regard to any new projects being implemented, we always been seeing to. Uh go to the uh go to the old school projects like they are coal and things. Where the other countries are uh rejecting it and moving away from those. We are, we want to go back, uh yeah, so that which is not very healthy. Um because we have enough resources uh in in our country that renewable energy could be. Uh you know, ma- made use of it to the uh optimum level. Uh unfortunately, uh whether it's somebody is blocking it for the political reasons. Or somebody is blocking it for their own benefits, yeah? Uh benefit of a small group of people taking ransom into other twenty-two million people, which is not. A nice things to do, right? So we need to be uh uh aware that, you know, the renewable energy is the way forward. The next era, uh I think we should strongly develop and. Uh looking at the uh I'm I'm talking that in the in the size of the uh case, okay? Uh and and the en- environment, I I have nothing, I have no interest in this uh getting involved in 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 the. Political aspect of it in the current situation, but I'm looking at the case perspective. Um so if you if you see that, you know, you're you're at the growth stage. And we could even see there are few players already in the market, there is no there's no uh high players in the market. Starting from nineteen ninety-one onwards that we have uh different players operating, five players operating, I suppose. Yeah, so uh I'm 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 taking one case to link it up, one area to link it up. Because that's 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 why it's highlighted in this particular complete case, okay? The last area uh I I'm not going to touch now. Uh so we should be ready about our. Uh uh our our in our state because we we should know uh that when we get into that mature stage. That we might have to face more intense rivalry, uh people would be fighting more for the bids. Uh they'll be coming in uh in numbers to allocate because we are looking at hundred thirty being offered. Uh you know, uh they want to operate in Jaffna and you know, in 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 different locations, you know, it doesn't matter to CHL, okay? So it now this is this is something that uh you know, we we need to uh be aware uh. Whether uh we would be oversupplying, yeah, even oversup. It doesn't matter because oversupplying can be exported, you know, then especially with electricity because electricity is always comes into a uh you know, the requirement. Uh the the whole problem is that we are not identified our own requirement, so we need to identify this Sri Lankan requirement. And you know, I I I doubt that we get into that maturity stage in at least another uh three or four decades. Even if you start using the renewable energy, because we can't be having uh. Uh the own way, okay, so we can develop our uh solar farms and you know, the windmills and also. Uh electricity from the sea, yeah, that that's that's very that's very interesting. Uh if you if you see the uh uh Maldives, yeah, for example, the island nation. Uh that's how they get in in certain areas, that's how they get, they get they get the dynamos to work with the uh. Uh wave movements of the sea, right? And pretty interesting that they generate for the small islands because and we we have sea around us, right? And we we don't make use of that uh twist potential, yeah? So there now this other, these are the things that, you know, we can uh uh go and explore. Uh because uh probably, I I believe that either we are at the development stage, that's why we have a very low rivalry. Or we are in between the develop and the growth stage, um so. The people are people could uh the buyers are not uh weak. But you know, buyers would require the moment because the government requires uh uh you know, the electricity. So the the more we produce that they would start buying from us as well, yeah? Um currently, uh government would encourage people to uh get into this, yeah? Uh of course, the quality standards to be met and the environmental standards to be met and so forth. So you need to be aware of these incidents. And and finally, the closed closed area, the the company does the strategic groups and your. Market segment that you operate with and also your strategic customers now, this is very important to identify uh your strategic group whom you are competing with. Yeah, uh for example, let me give you uh one example. Little of outside of your um. The power area, uh let's say, let's take the hotel side of it, okay? Let's go into hotel side. We have in Colombo, we have uh city hotels which are five star, four star and three star and so forth, okay? So now, if you take the Colombo City Hotel as a market, you have so many players in that market. Okay, so you you have so many different players in the market now. Although we have different hotels now, say for example, from Shangri-La to uh. Going down to Pearl Hotel or you know, to Renoka, uh Global Towers, you know, whatever. You have another Marianne Drive and you have different star category hotels, okay? Do you think that Renoka Hotel Renoka would be worried about what Shangri-La is doing? Or whether Shangri-La is worried about what Renoka is doing? No, yes, they are operating in Colombo, is they are on the same market, but. Their groups are different, now obviously, uh Shangri-La will be worried about what Hilton is doing. Taj will be worried about what Hilton is doing. Kingsbury will be worried about what Garadan is doing, so that you know, that's that's their that's their entire group looking at that particular perspective. Yeah, so uh it's not uh. There now. Renoka or even for the matter, uh cinnamon, red would not be worried about what the. Bigger brothers are doing. Now, that's where the strategic groups comes in, so you need to be careful, yeah? Now, if you take your power industry, the strategic group would be if you're looking at. Less than ten megawatt producers or ten megawatt producers will be your strategic group if you are in that particular level. Although you have people who are producing uh uh hundred megawatts or whatever, yeah? Uh i- it's not, so you don't fall into, yeah, you will get into that particular uh group. Like what I said about the five star, the four star and three stars, same category, but then your your players, you as a player. You will be not competing with that bigger player who is supplying a hundred megawatt. Your competitors would be the people who are supplying ten megawatts. Good for you because there is so much of opportunity in the market. The competition would come in only when at the bidding space. Not after that because you do have to struggle to find your market. Because the market is readily available to you, you I hope you understand what I'm saying. Especially with the electricity, the market is readily available to you. You don't have to store it, you don't have to market it, you don't have to uh advertise and say, uh we have electricity, come and get. No, there is a ready player who would acquire electricity to go off, so you do not worry about that market condition. There is no competitiveness, only the competitiveness comes at the bidding stage on the building up. Of the state, of of the of the project, so who would get it? Yeah, uh who would get it at what price? At what price you could supply, so probably uh. Siron Electricity Board would be looking at a certain price that they would be willing to pay. For the, for a unit, so if you can beat it, if you can give it lower with the operational costs and your capital expenditure. You win. Right, so this is what you need to look into your strategic group. And also the market segment, now hotels. Would concentrate on different market segments, isn't it? They would like, you know, I'm sure the Pearl Hotel is not going to concentrate on either. Juliana is going to concentrate on the top executives who will be visiting for meetings. So mice, yeah. Meeting incentives groups, you know, they are, they are not, they are not going to look at this smaller hotels, they'll be. Looking at definitely the cinnamon, grand or lake or, you know, other five star hotels around. Indian around Colombo for their Colombo state. A classic example is like, you know, when you had the Shogam in Sri Lanka. Unfortunately, we were, we were not be able to fill up the five star hotels, that's a different story, but. We. That was only for, that market segment was only for five star. At the beginning, we were talking about even acquiring, you know, to the project to get the three star categories also. And not only Colombo hotels, we are looking at Nigam hotels, yeah, at one stage. But then later, we couldn't, we didn't even feel the Colombo hotels, I mean, could not even feel the Colombo hotel because there was. Less participation, right? Right, so that's, that's where you need to identify and see and also the strategic customers are the people who would have an impact on you. Right. The unofficial, unofficial. You know, the. Figures, unofficial figures, okay, there's no confirmation on this information, but I'm trying to tell you now. The unofficial figures that they have identified, there is a segment of people, there is a segment of people, even at this particular juncture. Okay, even at this particular time, there is a segment of people who spends around about two hundred thousand rupees a day. Believe it or not, okay, believe it or not, of course, they have, they have company, right, they have company. You know, there are, there are people who, 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 but. The expenses, the, the, the purse is one person, not a pool, okay. It's about two hundred thousand bucks a day, like including breakfast at five stars, lunches five stars, something of that nature, yeah, so. And probably. Get back home or late night or whatever, stay up, so there is a. There is a very, very small segment, right? So you have this, that kind of a players would, they would not be. A strategic customer for a low end hotel. Yeah, so they might be. A game changer for a five star category or a, or a different. Different level of category hotels, now if they start patronizing. One particular hotel which they are very comfortable with. Or will they be changing the hotels, so now this is where you need to be careful, so. Now. For Sri Lanka city hotels, the main strategic customers would be the businessman. And the mice group, yeah, meetings and incentives, yeah. So the other, the other major people who come into Colombo City Hotels. Of course, you have the other, other hotels which are around, who come as a real tourist. Who would go around and the people who want to go and stay in the beaches, right, so that's, that's, that's where the difference comes in. So. This, so the beachgoers or the real tourists are not the city hotels strategic groups. That's what I'm trying to drive, okay, so you need to identify whom you are serving. Who is your key customers because that's very critical. To identify your strategic groups as well, now say for example, Dinkies, okay. These slides are there behind, I'm keeping this slide and talking to you, there are slides explaining these areas. Dinkies, that is double income, no kids versus double income with kids. Two different segments, okay, two different people, two different. Types of people, so double income, no kids. Would have, probably those families would have two vehicles. Because both of them would be going into two different directions, two different parties, yeah, where double income with kids. Probably a bigger wagon, yeah. Because they have to carry the kids also, so definitely they are going to have two vehicles, right? So even if they have two vehicles, like one would be a, a, a home run vehicle. Another one would be, you know, the, the family vehicle, yeah, so the home run vehicle, when I say home run vehicle, maybe. You know, the, the, the spouse stays at home, whoever it is, now of course. In this present generation, you don't know who is staying at home, whether the husband or the wife. Because now we could see there are a lot of house husbands. And, you know, I'm not joking, I'm serious, so. So they would be doing their shopping and whoever it is, you know, the, the home run ones, yeah, so the official vehicle would be different. So forth, so that's, those are the areas that you need to identify and work off with, right? That's your market segment and your strategic customers, right? The other area that you need to identify is the strategic gap. Now, this is something that you need to address, that you will be addressing as well, okay, the strategic gap means. Where. The current market is operating. And where a higher segment level of operations are taking place. In between that you don't see anyone operating, now say for example, you take the. Sri Lankan toilet soap market, for example, okay, I'm going to a different example so that you will, you will try to understand. Most of the toilet soaps are before the price increase, now of course. I'm not sure what the prices are, before the price increase, they were around this sixties range, okay. Now, I don't know whether it's hundred range, but I'm sure everything was on a sixties range. Your luxe, your anywhere, your velvet, your, I don't know, whatever it is, it's all on that sixties range. Then you have a little bit more, you have this detail coming up, you know, specialty soap kind of a thing. And, you know, mo- most of them are hovering around that and you had down going at about two hundred bucks at that particular time, I don't know whether they have. Down now, but then that was at about two hundred rupees, yeah. So in between there, you can see from sixties to two hundred, there's a hundred and forty gap. In between, there was no one operating. Yeah, so that's why you could see suddenly like. Pamoli comes in there and disappears, then you have Imperial Lada comes in and disappears. Because people try to fill that gap, now that's where you need to identify, so in any business, if you see there's a, there's a gap. Like that, then probably that's an area that you can operate. Like, you know, on a blue ocean strategy to go off it. Because less competitive, less players in the market, you create your own way and you start distributing. It's very interesting, isn't it, now even you, you look at the shaving races, disposable was I'm looking at, okay. You're, you're looking at. Gillette, the blades going at about two thousand five hundred, now I don't know how much it is, two thousand five hundred earlier. And you had like fifty rupees also. Okay. So you can see that huge gap, right, you had then eighties, hundreds, then in between there was no. Right quality blades. Then you're going for that two thousand five hundred, very strange, isn't it, nobody, nobody realizes it to bring it in. No, people, you know, the, the two brands that, I, I suppose every Sri Lankan man knows is the. It's Bigco. Nothing else, yeah. Think about it, nothing else, right, so now this is where you need to be. Pretty smooth and, you know, fast in getting into the area. You could see India is now manufacturing and they are, they are. They are promoting a brand because they, somebody has smartly identified that, okay, because that's a huge gap, you have. Even in Indian market, like you, your unit is at a top level and then you have the other. You know, the, the other brands hovering around at very low level and middle level, there's, there's a huge gap and nobody has. Appropriately approached it, right, so same way in your businesses, okay, whether it's. What you're trying to identify, whether it's a, whether, whether that, that will be, you need to identify whether that could be. Done in the business, what you do. The hotel where we want to build up or, you know, acquire, the, the power that we want to generate. Or the agricultural aspect of it that we are trying to work off with, whether identifying a gap to be. Filled, whether there is a gap to be filled and work on that gap, you know, that, why not, that's, that's a pretty good option to work off with, yeah. Right, okay, so we, we just finished off the environment and the purpose. Probably we'll be doing the capability, guys, now it's ten forty nine, I don't mind going in for a ten minutes break. So I will meet you at eleven o'clock, so be there. Have a quick cup of tea and come back so that we can do the next session from eleven onwards. So I hope you have got something. Out of it to link up with your case, I would love you all if I could make notes down while listening and. Thanks for waiting, thanks for being in the, in the, in the, in the event and I'll see you at eleven o'clock, yeah. So if there's any questions, please post it on the chat box, you can be anonymous and just post it on chat box so that, you know, I can answer. When we come back, right, will that be all right? So I'll see you at eleven o'clock, yeah, thank you. Uh, we, we just finished off the environment and the purpose. Um, probably we'll be doing the capability. Um, guys, now it's ten forty-nine, um, I don't mind going in for a ten minutes break. So I will meet you at eleven o'clock, so, uh, be there. Uh, have a quick cup of tea and come back so that we can do the next session from eleven onwards. Uh, so I hope you all have got something out of it to, uh, link up with your case. I would love you all if I could make notes down while listening. And, uh, thanks for waiting, thanks for being in the, uh, in the, in the, in the event. And I'll, I'll see you at eleven o'clock, yeah? So if there's any questions, please post it on the chat box. Uh, you can be anonymous and, uh, just post it on chat box so that you know I can answer when we come back, right? Will, will that be all right? So I'll see you at eleven o'clock, yeah? Thank you. Remember the, uh, customer is also one of the stakeholders. So if the customer wants certain things, how do you make use of your resources and your competencies to give what they want? That's the way that you can stay alive in the market and also if that customer likes what you're doing, then you can grow in the market. Yeah, right, resources could be fun. Tangi- tangible and intangible, uh, but then you have this complication about, uh, your finance and your human resources, yeah? So tangible means that you can touch and feel, okay? Then intangible is not, i- i- it's, it's not that. So, uh, your human resources and finance would, uh, create a little bit of a, a controversy because, uh, human, unless otherwise it is a skilled, uh, you know, uh, the, uh, body work that is like, you know, the physical work, it's it is, it is intangible that we make use of it is like, for example, where you work uh, as an accountant or a financial controller or whatever, uh, you're looking at. You are making use of your skill, right? You're making use of your brain, no, so whether it is, uh, then it becomes intangible. Uh, you're not pulling and pushing and, you know, carrying certain things, no, that is what you need, the tangible part of your body, right? So, uh, for human resources, when they take it up, then i- it, it becomes a, a bit of an issue. Uh, and also the, uh, the finances, okay? Uh, finance definitely is tangible, you can see, touch and feel, but then, uh, on the other side, that tangibility does not have any meaning. Uh, with the value of value in that particular tangible, uh, object, yeah? Say for example, hundred rupee note and a thousand rupee note, now of course, hundred rupees is equal to a thousand rupees, uh, note. You know, it's, it's, they're two different values, so what you see is intangible aspect of it. So what, what, what they've done is like, what they've done is they have decided that define to go on four types of, uh, uh, assets, uh, resources. So that is physical resources, now it's very clear, physical resources itself, so your buildings, machineries and so forth. Your financial resources, your human resources. And then your intellectual capital, like your brand, brand value, the processes, the approvers, the registration, the, uh, your, uh, standards and, you know, ISOs and things like that, anything, anything goes in that aspect of it. A little bit of terminology on this, uh, strategic capability would be a, uh, ideal situation like, you know, you can drop, name drop these things. Uh, so let's look at the threshold resources, threshold competencies, unique resources and the core competencies. As far as your cases concerned, you could easily categorize these elements. But you need to dig a little bit deeper to identify, uh, what these are uh, and the information what is available is very minimal, yeah? So your resources and competencies, as I said, the resources are the element and the competencies is what you, how do you make use of the resources, right? So if you're looking at the threshold capabilities, your capability means yeah, your capability means, right? It's your resources and your competencies, okay? Your capability is that. Your threshold capability means, right, you're, you're getting into your threshold resources. That is your minimum requirement. The next slide would give you a better picture, minimum requirement to serve your customers, okay? So let me finish this off, then we'll go to the other slide, then it will give you a better picture. Now you could see, uh, the unique resources and the core competencies are the ones which gives you a competitive advantage. Which others aspire to have, right? The threshold ones are the minimum ones which will have to be there to maintain your customers, right? So now, as I said earlier, the threshold ones, the threshold requirement are to meet your minimum requirement of your customers. Now, for example, let me put it in a holistic perspective, then probably you would understand what I'm saying, I'm going to take a different industry. And then you can link it up with the case. What do you need to, uh, run a bank? The fundamental resources, what do you need to run a bank? So probably you need buildings, you need people, yeah? That's, that's what you need and you need, you need a system. So you need a place, now that's your physical resources, you need human resources, okay? You need a, you need the system which is intangible resource, okay? And probably you need finances, obviously, right? So those are the four major things that you need, right? Now what is the minimum requirement? Now say for example, when a customer comes in, okay? The customer would come in like to, let's say to, uh, open a, a bank account, right? He wants to open a bank account. So you would require the forms, you require, you know, certain, uh, processes, your photographing or whatever, you know, everything. So fundamental, so to, to run a, to serve a customer in a bank, you need to have certain elements in place. Those are threshold. I'm going to go back to nineteen eighty-one. Is it eighty-one, eighty-five, eighty-four, eighty-four, I think, yeah, I think eighty-four. Yeah, I can't remember exactly, right? Sambath Bank bought this, uh, so-called fancy some machines, yeah? They bought and installed these fancy machines in their branches. And suddenly there was about one kilometer, uh, queue. Now of course, one kilometer queue is nothing, uh, there was one kilometer queue. To identify why that's where you can get your money even after the bank closes. What I'm referring to, I'm referring to the ATM machines. So ATM machines was, uh, uh, magic at that particular era. And only Sambath Bank had it, local banks, yeah? Uh, there's a fight between Sambath and, uh, HSBC, who bought the ATM machine, who cares? As long as now we have the ATM machines, that's fine, yeah? It's like the Daimler and the Ford who made the car, right? So now who is bothered about who made the car? Um, because both that way we does that they made the car, yeah, obviously. So we have the cars now, that's good enough for us, we happy, be happy with that. So when they brought it up, that was an absolute, absolute, uh, uh, it was not a threshold resource. It was a unique resource. It was a unique resource at that particular time, okay? Because people could, uh, get money or, you know, from the bank even after one thirty. I remember, uh, people used to say the banks closes on Mondays fro- by one o'clock it, it's closed shop and one, one thirty the other day, so I, I, I'm not sure, I, I think that's, that's the way they are operating. One and one thirty. No, this twenty-four hour banking businesses, they never heard. Late banking and I never heard, okay? Only later on i- is all, everything started up. Because to counter the Sambath Bank's ATM machine, I think the Seland Bank started late banking of eight, late o'clock and be followed by the Commercial Bank and so forth, right? So the, the, that was a unique resource at that particular time. Today, you tell me today whether that has become a threshold resource or not? Every single bank has that. You see, the, 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 the competitive advantage, what, uh, Sambath had at that particular time by bringing that, uh, ATM machine, now it's gone. Because everybody has acquired it, so anything to do with a resource, a competitive resource, a unique resource, that unique resource would give you that competitive advantage until such time your competitor acquires it. Yeah, I hope that is clear, right? So similar in your, in your case, you need to identify and see what we have best of what we have, what others don't have. Certain unique resources. Yeah, so with the resources, we saw that four types of resources that we can categorize. So now this will give you whether it's a, uh, it's a strength for us or it's, it's nothing, yeah? This threshold resource is a nothing, you know, you know, the, 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 on the smiley face, you know, you have this, just no, no smile, just dumb, you know? You're, you're not happy or neither, you're happy or not happy, you know, that kind of a situation. Today whether that has become a threshold resource or not? Every single bank has that. You see, the, 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 the competitive advantage, what Sambath had at that particular time. By bringing that ATM machine, now it's gone. Because everybody has acquired it. So anything to do with a resource, a competitive resource, a unique resource. That unique resource would give you that competitive advantage until such time your competitor acquires it. Yeah, I hope that is clear, right? So similar in your, in your case, you need to identify and see what we have best. Of what we have, what others don't have, certain unique resources. Yeah, so with the resources, we saw that four types of resources that we can characterize. So now this will give you whether it's a, it's a strength for us. Or it's, it's nothing, yeah? This threshold resource is a nothing, you know, you know, the, 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 on the smiley face, you know, you have this, just. No, no smile, just dumb, you know? You're, you're not happy or neither you are happy or not happy, you know, that kind of a situation. The same thing, the competencies. Now, as I said, competencies are the processes, how you make use of your. Your resources to the better part, okay? Now, opening up an account, opening up an account at any bank, it's almost similar procedure, isn't it? You have to give your ID by the time you give your ID card, you know, the KYC is done and you know. And while you wait, you get your ATM card and if you're eligible for a credit card. They will issue a credit card nowadays, everybody wants to issue credit cards, so. And put more people into trouble. So it's, it's a, it's, it's, you know, people who can't manage will get into trouble, not others. So it's a. It's a normal process, everybody has that, okay? Now, take a loan, for instance, approval of a loan. Some banks offer loan within two weeks, two visits, two weeks. Some bank offers, but of course the advertisement does not show two visits, two weeks, advertisement shows at least two years. Because. You know, the, the house is seen while the child is walking, so child, if the child is walking, must be one plus. Then child don't come automatically, so the child has to be, be made, so it takes about another ten months, I suppose. So then two, almost two years plus to have that house. And so I don't know whether the, whether it's a build house or whether it is a bought house, so bought house does not take two years. So some logic behind that advertisement, right? Anyway, that's, that's a different story, okay? The certain banks would say. Drive in your, go in your friend's vehicle and come back in your own vehicle. That means what is in twenty-four hours? Not twenty-four hours actually, it's in eight hours, not even eight hours, it can be even four hours. So how we make use of our resources to. Satisfy the customer requirement. Now, if you could make use of your resources, if you could add the processes right. And that's your competencies. Now how do you manage your resources? Now that is where it gives you a sustained competitive advantage to move on. Because as I said earlier, the resource would, would give you that competitive advantage until such time somebody buys it. But this competence is, it will be, be difficult for people to copy. Now that's why people pay a little bit more to the people who have that intellectual capabilities of being innovative. Yeah, so this is, this is where the money comes in, okay? People might wonder, oh, this guy is not doing anything and he's looking up and waiting from morning till evening. But one idea would give them like billions of dollars, yeah? So that's, that's, that's where, that's where it is, that's where it been paid, right? So core competencies would give you, so then if you're identifying with your organization, if you're identifying with your, the way. You know, it, it has been, you know, the way, the, the, to identify your. The resources and your competencies, you could break it up in this manner, then this will give you definitely. This will be a, a, a strength for you, this will be a strength for you on, on. When you have this unique resources and core competencies. And if you don't have certain things which are, which are required. Or which are, which is not available, you know, to you, but it is available to your competitors. Then it becomes your weakness, yeah? So this is how you, you manage, so your SW comes from fundamentally. By one of these analyses that you can get it done. The next one, you can look at their cost efficiencies, yeah? Now, CHL has enough experience since nineteen ninety-one, they're, they're looking at, yeah? So that experience would give them avenues and opportunities to reduce cost. As I said earlier. If the price is fixed, if the volume is constant. Yeah, the price is fixed and the volume is constant, your revenue growth is minimal. Yeah, your revenue growth cannot, your revenue cannot grow. Because if somebody else is fixing your price and your plant would give you a certain capacity only. Your revenue is not going to grow. Simple case, okay? But on the other hand. Your experience of producing that. Would help you to reduce the cost. That could contribute towards your competitive advantage. The product design itself. The products, what you decide, let me jump into the agricultural perspective, yeah? We see the, the sawdust which is in demand, then he's looking at a alternative sources. So that would give a bigger advantage. In, in terms of growing and identifying that. Because that, that, that has been designed in such a way, so that you know that have access, that have, that has benefits, yeah? So your product design itself would help you to create this, the, the advantage now. You know, if you, if you ask, the cost efficiencies would come through that because. You know, when, when. See the, the. When you start manufacturing a certain product, if you ask the. Plant managers or the manufacturers, the people who are working on the plant. They always say the cost efficiency is how simple your design is. Yeah, not a complicated product, a simple design product. Yeah, would give you a, a better cost efficiency. And see, so your, your designing of the product itself is much easier, much, it's better to get that cost efficiency high. Your economies of scale, how much you produce? Yeah, now this could be the economies of scale or economy of scope. Same number of people working for multiple projects. Now this is, this is something that you know, everybody is now looking at. Earlier you had only one project to work off it, so you had. Four directors, one project, the, the salaries and payments would be much higher. So your, your salaries and payments would be higher, then, then you had to go, if you go into newer project. Then probably your salary per project will be reduced, yeah? So economic scope versus economic scale, right? Then your supply cost, now all these four would give you that cost efficiency. Now, cost efficiency gives you a competitive advantage. Cost efficiency would give you that, a, a strength opportunity, yeah, a strength to work off it, right? So if you can't acquire this, right? Whereas your competitors are acquiring, then it becomes. Your weakness, finally, it might be a threat for you for existence. So looking at your cost efficiency, how you could improve it to analyze? Because we are in, in, in the, the stage of analyzing internal perspective. To see how the cost efficiency would help you. In maintaining a, a competitive advantage. The sustaining your competitive advantage also very, very, very critical. Now, this is something that CHL can easily look at. Look at, because they are now more or less of a established organization, yeah? For twenty years of exposure, established organization with their capabilities, the case says so, okay? The case says so, so now they need to sustain that competitive advantage to work off it. Number one, it has to be value, value in the sense, value in the eyes of the people. Value, when I say value in the eyes of the people, value in the eyes of the customers, the customers should value your product. Obviously, as far as the, you know, the, your. Your power generation and also in agricultural perspective, the product would be valued. Yeah, so different, you're going on a, probably, on, on, if you're looking at the medicinal herbs. Kind of, you know, the fungi. You're, you're, you're on the right track because people would value that, okay? So with, with the, with absolute medicinal benefits coming in from those elements, yeah? When people don't know about, about the, the benefit of those particular products, right? So people would have to value that, then it has to be rare, right? Inimitable, substitution, you have to be, we'll come to that, and also dynamic, yeah? So few aspects of maintaining that, so value, we just talked about. Whether the customer would value your product, okay? The customer has the value on it. Now, say for example, I'm, I'm moving away from the case to another side. When you, when you go to a, you know, if you, when you want to buy a shirt or a blouse, okay? Just hypothetically. When you see something, when you walk into your store and when you see certain thing which has been displayed, and if you really like it. You would give a price to that in your mind, believe me, that's, 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 that's the consumer psychology. You give a price to your, price to that in your mind, okay, that must be about four thousand five hundred, five thousand rupees, then I would buy for it. Yeah. You like it, you get close to it, you see the tag, it says two thousand. What do you do? I of course buy two, because in my mind, I, I, I decided, okay, that's about five thousand rupees, okay? Looks good, I can afford to give five thousand, so maybe when I see is two thousand, I'll buy two or maybe three, three different colors or shades. So that means my, the, the consumer, what the, what has paid a value in my mind. That is now. You know, i- it's higher than your actual selling price. So you could sustain that competitive advantage through that. I hope you understand what I'm saying, yeah? But if it is like fifteen thousand. I'm going to turn away because I am willing to pay only five thousand, so that means the, 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 the value what is being created. Is not for me, maybe for somebody else, but not for me, yeah? The reality perspective. Look at whether your product is unique. Whether you can sustain it for a long time. Whether the values could be transferred. People who follow, you know, the, the English Premier League would know. I, I believe you're, you have heard the name of Sir Alex Ferguson and Jose Mourinho, yeah? Both of them are not in the picture very much in the EPR. They are, they are, they are very rare sources, they are pretty rare sources, yeah? But of course, they're very rigid as well. Yeah, when I used to watch when Sir Alex Ferguson coached Manchester United. You know, when, when the many players don't like the lineup what he has selected for a particular match. They will, you know, go down two nil in the first half. And then they will have a chat and tell, probably I think they would tell him, you know, the decision what you made is wrong. And they would correct it, come back and win four two or three two or whatever, yeah? So that's, that's what, that's how they were, that's, that's how they were, right? So make sure that your product, what you sell or the process, it's unique, it's. You can, you can, the, the transability is there, and also you can sustain it for a long time, not, not, not just once. Some people are good of making things only once, not continuously, yeah? The third one is inimitable, don't allow that to be copied. Don't allow your product to be copied or duplicated. Now, this is one of the reason that I don't like Apple, this is one reason. Yeah, of course, we use Apple, but then. Apple's duplication is very, I would say very easy. They just open back, I, I remember once, you know, when, when, when in Hong Kong. Their, their product, you know, always they launch in the second week of September, yeah? It's the ninth, tenth, that's, that's a date that they. Put their product out, they introduce their product, a new, new version. So once I was there during that particular time in, in Hong Kong with Hong Kong University. So I, while I was traveling in the, their metro. You know, while the door is closing, that they just threw a handful of pamphlets inside the train, you know, that's, that's what they do. So then to pick it up to see, buy one, get one free, that was the offer, yeah? Apple, buy one, get one free, so I was wondering like, okay, not bad, let's go and try it out. You know, special offer, introductory offer, blah, 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 all those things, right? Okay, good. So I, it was the next station, so then the next day I went. And I went to the shop which was, which said, the moment I walked in, I said, yeah, can I have a look at it? They said, what do you want? You want in Android or in iOS? I said, you're setting Apple, ah, yeah, 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 Apple, yeah, Android and iOS, which one you want? So then only I realized it's fake, yeah, it was absolutely cheap. I don't support the fake product, so I said, thank you very much and walked off. But then, this is, that's, so they were so good at it. And it just resemble the same with that particular one button on. And everything was perfect. And they allowed it to copy, yeah? So this inimitable part comes with three perspectives, one is the complexity, the other one is the culture and history and the casual ambiguity. I'm sure most of you are working with, some of you are, at least some of you are mostly working with SAPs. SAP is a, 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 a package which, which is an ERP. You know, on a fragmented market, it has about seventeen or eighteen percent fighting there. You ask them to modify certain modules, they will say you modify this, this will impact the other one. The other one will impact the other one, another one, so everything is linked, everything is complexed. So if you change one, you have to change the entire thing. Finally, that you might not have a new system, you will have the old system. It's no point, isn't it? Now this is where people don't, you know, they don't, they don't like that new system because the new system don't give the old system features. That's how you call it a new system, but then people want, want the new system with the old system, yeah? This is, that, that is really, yeah, so that is, that's how we work, right, okay? So. Then it's difficult to copy, okay, difficult to mediate. If you have a strong culture and history, now if you look at the, any. Any theme parks, the first theme park comes into our mind. Now is probably universal because it's closer to us and most of us have seen in Singapore. Otherwise generally it's Disney. Disney as a strong culture, starting from US, coming into Europe, then moving into Hong Kong, then now into China. It's a, it's a, it's a strong, it has a pretty strong culture, yeah? And a history to work off it, so it's very difficult to copy them. Yeah, the characters what they are built on, you can see over the ages. Probably our grandfathers have enjoyed those characters, and probably our kids are enjoying the characters. So it's very difficult to copy that, okay? And also, uh, the casual ambiguity is a nice word. The casual ambiguity is, uh, gives you two headache. Number one, uh, one is a good headache and the other one is a bad headache, not a bad headache, so-so headache. The good headache is that, uh, people don't know, or your competitors don't know, why you are so good. That's a very good thing, isn't it? So the competitors can't copy you because they don't know why, why, why you are being preferred in the market than them, yeah? Wonderful, isn't it? So they don't know. The second headache comes, actually, even we don't know why we are good at. Now, that's something not very good. Because we can't improve on it. Now, most of the Nestle products are like that. The Kit Kat. Fundamental, no? Fundamental. We, we, we also do have that same uh, product, Chit Chat. Yeah, way for Saint Chocolate Trapped, that's it, nothing else. But see the way it is positioned. Uh, look at the uh, like sunlight for Unilever in Sri Lanka, that's the number one for them. Nestor Moid, and with this, uh, what do you call, milk powder issue and things like that, now I, I hear uh, that the product is skyrocketing, yeah? Uh, although you have, you had the different absolute fantastic brand ambassadors for its competitive product, which is Viva. Now, Viva is handled by Unilever, very interesting. Yeah, uh, because uh G S K uh, been amalgamated with the, you know, uh, with the Horlicks and Viva. So it's very interesting to see, you know, how, 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 how things would go on. Yeah, because uh, Unilever uh gave away its uh spread range, that's because uh, Warren Dufay wanted to buy there, yeah? Warren Dufay offered it through Kraft, Kraft is Warren Dufay's. Yeah, so uh, Warren Dufay want to control the entire spread range because they had the fantastic spread range, yeah? With the jams and cordias and sauces and uh Astro and Mama Astro is a local jewel, uh, they had the flora. And I can't believe it's not but uh the kind of brand, so they sold it, they sold it off because they didn't want to be attractive to uh Warren Dufay because Warren Dufay will definitely buy it again. Yeah, so they, they declined the offer and they sold it off. Now they are only focusing on certain other elements and they able to uh, get hold of uh, things what, which is uh, which was at G S K consumer that they have taken over that. Yeah, so that's, that's how they have amalgamated on that. So it's, it's a very interesting perspective, right? So the casual ambiguity uh would give you that inimitable uh capability, right? Uh, then the substitution, it's very, very important when your product could be substituted by technology. Now, like for example, the post office, okay? But uh, uh, post office is no more in, in normal operation, right? They didn't, they don't have to, because uh, stamp sales goes down because uh you have S M S and emails. Uh, you don't write long letters, there's no A M Ls going up and down. There's only official letters going on, there's nothing else beyond that, yeah? So few, few things which are, which have uh, which you have to be aware that, you know, you might not want to uh, go off, so substitution, you need to be aware and make sure that you are, uh, you, you, you take precautions, uh, not that substitution allows you to fail, yeah? So what do they do? Like the post office, what do they do? The post office immediately moved on, they became uh, you know, the uh, Dada Paula centers, yeah? The, the all traffic uh violations that you pay over there, they became the collectors. Uh, even for certain banks have signed up agreements with them so that they can transit because they have a fantastic network, yeah? So you don't need branches, so you can have the transactions over there. Uh, so many other things what they have gone, including uh mobile reloading, because now that is the, that's a, that's a, uh, that's a fashion which uh Sri Lanka spends a lot of money on it, that you can see, um, immediately tax is being included, uh, to raise tax, immediately the tax was included onto telecommunication. Because we spend so much of money on it, even you don't have money to eat, you want to reload it with fifty rupees, hundred rupees. That's what we are now. You're so engrossed with the internet, yeah? Finding unnecessary details, unnecessary information, you're hooked on to it. So you spend at least about a hundred to two hundred rupees, just imagine like, you know, I have about fifteen million phones, yeah? And about nine million phones with uh smart options. So if nine million phones is start, smart options spends two hundred rupees, a hundred rupees, let's say a hundred rupees a day, or fifty rupees a day. Just imagine the revenue which comes in and you have about twenty-three percent tax on it. That's the revenue what you're giving to the government, good people, yeah? So, uh, you need to be absolutely careful when you're, when you're being replaced by telecom, right? And if you want to sustain that competitive advantage, you need to be very dynamic, yeah? The dynamics in a sense like organize, you as an organization, you should be able to understand the entire world. The world and the market, what is happening around you. In eighties, when you had this uh financial crisis in the world, law banks filed bankruptcy nineties, yeah? Uh, they filed bankruptcies. And uh, where certain banks were able to sustain them, sustain it because they were able to be dynamic, understanding the environment, they offered various type of uh, uh, you know, uh, facilities and various type of promotions to be there in the market, yeah? So if we need to sustain that advantage, competitive advantage, what we have, yeah? Because we have, we have seen very less been discussed in the case. So probably these are the areas which can prop up because these areas have been not discussed, right? So uh, that's why I'm spending a little bit time on these areas, which is not covered. So you never, uh, how do we uh sustain that competitive advantage through different means and different sources? Especially with your, uh, you know, the real model, but we are just looking at it. Uh, finally, the analysis, uh, looking at your value chain, your value network, your benchmarking, activity maps, and we can, we will sum it up with your uh, short metrics or the analysis finally, yeah? Your value chain is another way of identifying where you're creating value in your system. Uh, this is an ideal situation for a um, production operation, a fantastic situation, right? Now, say for example, your inbound logistics will cover your raw materials, storage, your uh raw materials, stocks, your raw materials into the production flow. Now, if you look at your uh hydro power. Okay, if you look at the hydro power, machineries, equipments would also fall into this particular area where you have to store it. You know, because there may be some issues, repairs, so the spares need to be there. Then the water flows. Yeah, the water flows. Uh, so that's your inbound, then your operation, conversion that water power into electricity power. Outbound logistics is how you uh store it, how do you release it to your customers? Yeah, how do you make sure that it's on? So for you, your customer is cylinder electricity board. So how do you supply your power to your cylinder electricity board grid, main grid, that's it. Probably marketing and sales would cover your uh, uh, you know, uh, the, the, the selling proposition. Probably that's important at the beginning of it, the relationship what you have. You could see uh, you're, you're pretty close with the ministers, you're pretty close with your president, you know, uh, that, that's, that's quite important to have a good rapport, you know, it, it doesn't mean that, you know, you're doing something wrong, but then uh, you know, it's good to have good rapport, especially in the uh third world countries, yeah? Now I can call ourselves a third world country, otherwise somebody will tell me no. Yeah, okay, we, let's put it in a developing countries, but no, no more developing country now, yeah? So hard luck, fine. We have been developing country since nineteen forty-eight, that's, that's the sad part, okay? Uh, then your auto service. Uh, fortunately, unfortunately for uh your power generation, the auto service is not very required. So why I'm showing this is that this value chain could be entirely modified according to your requirement on your operations to identify where you are creating value. Your turbines, looking at thousand five hundred kilowatts each, whether they are producing thousand five hundred. Yeah, so that's your operational perspective. So if not producing, what's wrong? Is something technically the transmission, there's a, is there's a failure? Uh, so that's the operational perspective. So if you're getting that thousand five hundred as expected, then probably you're good. So you're looking at thousand five hundred into twelve, you're looking at eighteen megawatts. Yeah, so now you are getting sixteen megawatts, I would just say it is a identify where this, on your value chain, identify where your uh, where you stand. Uh, how do we uh, how do we see the value addition coming in? Not unnecessarily, the expenses are going out, which will reduce your margin. Your procurement, how do you acquire? Your human resource management, who are the people who are there? Your technology development, your innovation comes in. Firm infrastructure facilities, there are finance, pretty interesting, they have money. Somebody might argue that they are not declaring dividends, hmm? We know that, you know, you, you, you and me have worked out, we know that, you know, whatever the money, whether it goes on dividend or not goes on dividend, it relies, it, it, it falls back as the shareholders' capital, yeah? Because the investments get returns. So those investments are invested as organization, the organizations uh revenue and, and the profits belongs to the shareholders. Yeah, so end of the day, uh, that remains and uh, it stays with, with the organization. So which is the primary activities and your supporting activities to go on with. Now, as I said, identify. Identify what are the issues in your firm infrastructure, identify what are the technology development now. All three segments, or new segments that they are willing to go in. Your human resource management, your procurement. What are the issues that they have mentioned? What are the issues that you foresee? Uh, one small incident that, you know, the uh, there is a, a conflict between the uh, one of the shareholders and the CEO chairman with regard to the dividend policy. Uh, of course, uh, you know, the, the CEO chairman is uh quite uh strong and powerful, so probably you over but then that, that would be, you could see uh that, that sparks at the end, yeah? Uh, wants to get out of it, right? So there are the, 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 for that, the culture matters, okay? Believe that, okay? The culture matters. The culture you, it's your company that you build on and now it is going, it's turning into another uh, uh, side of it, then you don't like to be part of it, you know? These are, these are the cultural perspective, right? The way you look at it, so it's, it's quite different. The value network is where you, you have linking your value chain with your customers as well as your suppliers. So your, your customers would be uh, you know, your, your, your customers, in this case, I'm just taking the uh, your power generators is cylinder electricity board. And they distribute to the people, the mass. What are the mass expectation? Continuous supply, yeah, enough supply. So we want the power to be stored and we want the power to be used when it's required. So excess power, obviously, we could export, I mean, the export of power, we have been talking for I think since nineteen eighties, yeah? And uh, things are not, things have gone completely berserk now. Otherwise, we are looking at the, the, the export of powers, okay? People might blame each other of not identifying the uh, you know, the electricity requirement in the future. But obviously, electricity requirement in the future been well identified. And uh, you know, the requirement we know, but uh, the only problem is like we, we are not identified what project to go ahead. Yeah, so we need somebody to uh take the national interest forward. National interest is the only interest, not any other interest, and then you can easily obtain the projects without any problems, yeah? So you can uh embed your value chain with your suppliers' value chain as well as your channels and your customers in return, so that in general circumstances, in general circumstances, the requirement of your end users, yeah, the, your customer would fit in into, fit into your uh channels. So that means people will start complaining to their uh, you know, the electricity board, whether they, they are getting that required uh, amount of electricity on time. And also no unnecessary uh searches, because your electrical equipments could get damaged. If you have that type of problem, so thinking of all those perspectives, that you can uh embed your value network so that, you know, you could see where you are adding value to your organization. Few questions that you can uh identify to see whether uh it's uh giving you a strength or a weakness. Uh, what activities uh, uh important, uh, where the profit pool is coming from? Where the money is saved, uh, whether it needs to be outsourced. Now, this is another uh, corporate decision which need to be made, yeah? Is that we might be good at, but then certain things that it's good to get from outside, if your internet cost is going to be higher than the external cost. Taking, uh, you know, uh, taking into consideration what you operate with. And if it is not, is one of your core elements, then it's better to outsource. Rather than, uh, incurring unnecessary, uh, costs, that's how you could see a lot of organizations and they are cleaning, uh, uh, you know. Part being outsourced to various organizations because they could do it in bulk. Whereas, uh, locally, uh, you know, it might not be, uh, feasible to maintain. A, a crew to, uh, clean up the organization, you know, it might be quite, uh, expensive, yeah? Now say for example, if somebody has to, uh, clean the, uh, uh, you know, the, the. Common areas and the toilets and the officers and things like that. You had to look at it two perspective, number one, the, uh, the trade secrets. Yeah, somebody else can, uh, go inside an office, uh, while pretending to, uh. Uh, to clean, they can take now easy photographs, okay? Easy photographs from the documents what is on the table, that's one. Yeah, so you had to value that, so you take certain precautionary measures not to display those things there. Number two, on the other hand, let's say you have a crew, but then. If somebody is absent from that, then you have no replacement. Whereas if you have outsourced it. Whether that allocated crew is there or not, they are supposed to meet the contract requirement. Eight peoples mean eight people, so they need to be there, uh, something like that. So it's much easier because they are trained, the raw materials, I mean, the cleaning materials, what they, what they, uh. Get, they can buy it in bulk because they are not only doing one organization, they are doing about twenty organizations, so we know that economic scales would give us the cost efficiencies. Yeah, so their cost could be much more cheaper than what we do maintain because we would go in by to the normal retail price. But whereas they could buy it in a wholesale price, because if you buy it in wholesale price, then we, we might not require, you know, so much of. Uh, materials for, and it might go waste and be fridge, yeah? So you do, uh, by, uh, identifying this value chain analysis. We could easily, uh, identify which functions that we might need to outsource, yeah? Who are the best partners, what are the best people to do certain things in our value chain? Yeah, that's, that's, that's another good thing. Uh, like your, uh, storage partners. Yeah, so there are a lot of organizations, don't tap warehouse now. The, the mega warehouses are maintained by, uh, so many companies. So they hire a small area or they, they have a understanding, um. Uh, the organization have a understanding with these, uh, uh, you know, the, the warehouse, uh, management, uh, companies. That. They would. Give their requirement, they will store their materials, they will safeguard their materials and everything for a fee. And that fee might be much more cheaper than you managing it, yeah? And they would make sure that the stock, minimum stock is maintained and they would have information flown to the organization. More efficiently and also they would make their transportations, like including the clearance. And delivery to your, uh, you know, the production flow on time, yeah? So why bother? So then you will understand, uh, your inbound logistics could be totally entirely outsourced. You could have a fantastic procurement team. Because your partners are not going to be worried about that what price that you buy, it's your baby, right? So you, you have a, a fantastic procurement team who would negotiate the right price, rest is. By your logistic partner, yeah, so that is possible, right? Now, this is, this could be done, now these are the areas which are not being discussed in detail on operational perspective because. Uh, we are looking at more of a corporate and business level, uh, so just to give you. Which will, uh, contribute towards a, a corporate decision, whether. The partners whom we work with and also what are the activities that we can outsource for the cost efficiency aspect of it. The next one is, uh, the benchmarking. Benchmarking approaches could be made on three perspectives, one, uh, it's the, uh, historical benchmarking internally. Now, this is good to identify whether we are still maintaining at the same level, we are having the same, uh, quality. Uh, 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 figures and also we are, um. Operating at the, uh, highest level which was set or we have gone beyond it, right? So if something wrong, now say for example, if you have been producing, uh. Sixteen megawatts constantly for three months, so that you'd have benchmark, okay? Uh, on average, you should get sixteen megawatts from your farm, okay? Now suddenly, January, February, March, April, May, June, us find July drops to twelve. Then you know something wrong somewhere, now of course you don't wait for the entire month to identify that, you know, you have dropped down at twelve, so weekly probably you might have to produce. Four megawatts, so then which is like, now you does drop to three, which is like seventy five percent of your original capacity, then immediately you will rectify it. Now that's what the benefit of the internal benchmarking, because you will know what you have produced and you know what you are producing now, whether it's tally. On the other hand, the industry benchmarking or the competitive benchmarking or the sector benchmarking, whatever you call it. Which will give you what your competitors are producing and what you are producing. Now, if you are producing with the same windmill. What your competitor is. Uh, producing, say for example, uh, S, yeah, uh, expense. Down Amadou, down, down south, it is the same thing what they are producing and their production is five. Yeah, five megawatts, then something wrong with you. The industry average is about four point eight, four point nine, and you are getting only four, so that means something wrong somewhere. But of course, there are, uh, uh, this all depends on the nature, the, the wind flow. Of course, you can set your sail accordingly, you can't change the wind direction, you can change your sail, okay? You can change your sail to get the best out of it, but then. Giving those elements, yeah, giving those, you know, uh, working on those elements and marginalizing it out. Then you should be able to arrive at a figure where the industry is norm. So industry norm would help you in identifying and matching. What you require, what, what is, what is, what is, what is necessary for the moment? The third one is a, 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 a good way of, very good way of looking at it, best in class. Best in class, now, uh, for example, uh, you need to identify a, a proper and appropriate. Uh, industry or an organization to do this, uh, you know. Map this out. Now, so for example, uh, uh, the Apollo hospitals benchmark themselves with D H L. Now you might wonder what has Apollo hospitals has to do with D H L? Uh, Apollo hospitals is famous for their surgeries, okay, they are, especially their heart surgeries, they were, they are very famous. Uh, now it is turned into Lancashire, hospitals, earlier it was Apollo hospitals, okay? Uh, in Sri Lanka, it's Indian based, uh, organization, uh, they're, they're quite famous in India too. Uh, and then. D H L, D H L is a courier delivery. Organization. So what is the specialty of D H L? The right product. To the right customer at the time what they have promised. And fastest possible. So the right package goes to the right customer, fundamental. The right operation is done to the right patient, fundamental. You have the available number of D H L, you can track your product, what is happening? You can track your package where it is, you'll track your package to see whether it's on sea, sky or land. If it is land, which airport? When it will be sent off, when it will arrive, when it will arrive at my doorstep? Very detailed. The patient who is going into the hospital would not know his process. So D H L like this, similar to D H L, the patient also was tagged with a barcode. So everything, everywhere the patient goes, the barcode reads, billing was easy. All what they do it to, they do read the barcode, they do scan the barcode and then bill it to the barcode. Yeah, so the process became right, so the billing process were settled. The operation process or the treatment process was visible. Anybody could like, you know, the people who are closer to them would see like, you know, what, what's happening, whether the operation is completed, whether the operation, the, the patient is on the recovery. Room, otherwise nobody will know, right? And when the patient is recovered and, you know, you could be able to track it like your package. So these are the, these are the, uh, benefits that you could get when you, uh. Benchmark outside and also you could see whether you are above those best in class. Or some are there in your best in class. So whether you are in equal into the industry average or you are better than the industry average, so you are equal and to the present. Uh, you know, the, the, your, uh, extra, your past, uh, performance or whether you are better than your past performance. So that will step, set up your, your, your weakness and, uh, strengths. So that's your benchmarking. The third element is the activity maps. Activity maps. This will give you, now this is ideal for even for any organization to do the activity maps to identify. Where they are getting the revenues and where the profit is coming from and what they are good at. Because this is linked, this is linked between the competencies and the competitive advantage. Your competencies and the computer, we, we, we define competencies, competencies, uh, uh, means that. They are the, uh, the, the, the processes, how the, uh, resources are managed. So whether your competencies can be linked with your competitive advantage, look at this. Your, your, uh, is one of the aircraft which is, uh, you know, which, uh, which, uh, you know, uh. So which has a, which has a fantastic record, yeah, which has a fantastic record of, uh. On time, uh, delivery, on time, takeoff, on time landing, uh. There, this, this one airline which didn't go bankruptcy after nine eleven attack. Uh, even during the pandemic that they were operating at a, at a full stretch scale, because they were able to maintain that. At a cheaper price, uh, the lowest price and the best of service, so they, they. Have certain, uh, uh, fundamentals right in the right places. They take only ten minutes turnaround time, generally it's one hour. Aircraft supposed to be on sky, not on the ground. So more and more fly, the more and more revenue will get, simple. The ships are there to sail, not to be anchored, not to wait out of sea, not to wait for the demurrage to be paid. They are supposed to be sailing, that's why the demurrage you have to pay, yeah, simple, very simple case. Uh. Ten minutes turnaround time, you can see that. And things that contribute towards your lowest fare. So the biggest advantage what they have, how do they do that? They have only one class booking, easy. You see, I, I'm sure most of you would have traveled, they would take. Uh, the economy class passengers, back of the, back of the, uh, who have been allocated in the back. Uh, back, uh, the rear of the aircraft first. Then the middle, then the front, probably depending on the, uh, aircraft type. The business class passenger, the first class passengers would be given an opportunity to, uh, check in anytime they want, to walk in anytime they want. But they can't wait till more than ten minutes. The flight to take off, yeah, so they do be on, be seated. So, uh. One class service, it's in the board, you don't have to call one by one, you know, please go and take a seat, that's it, yeah? Uh, no intermediaries, so reduction of the commission, so direct booking gives you the lowest price. Uh, more flights between two points, cost reduces because you are making use of your assets more, more. Uh, time on air, your, uh. Revenue per flying is higher, revenue per aircraft is higher, so therefore you could afford a lower price. Uh, you don't land on, uh, major airports, you land on secondary airports. You don't land on Gatwick or Heathrow, you land on Stamford, yeah, or City. Uh. It's, you don't wait till, you know, the check-in counters to be open, you, uh, self-check in automatically because they don't encourage the baggages. Uh, so you just carry hand luggage and walk in, yeah? Uh, automatic self-check-in counters, you know, the keys are there so that, you know, you can, uh, walk in, enter your password or whatever they give you. Uh, or you scan your mobile, uh, with your, in that and you get your boarding pass and walk, that's it, yeah? No, no, there's no human interaction to work, work things out. Uh. People are very, uh, happy, uh, because, uh, uh, they get paid very well, they've been looked at very well. Uh, they have been trained very well, yeah, uh, all the aircrafts are maintained in house, they have their own, uh. Mechanics, they used one, one kind of airport, uh, uh, aircraft, so it will be much easier for them to manage, no. So if you have only one type of car, it's easy in that, you know, in and out of it. Uh, what does that mean? They will never go out of shortage of the, uh, maintenance people because every airport, if they have one, if somebody can't. Uh, come or if somebody is sick or whatever it is, they can fly in. On the flight itself, they can take another, uh. Person, uh, he, he knows that aircrafts very well, because anyway, so he does not worry about. Uh, you know, the maintenance part, so this activity map should give you that particular bigger perspective, yeah? Look what, what you, what you see, right, what you, what you are, what you are looking at. Right. So that will give you a, 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 a brief idea of how do you work things out and finally the SWOT analysis. SWOT analysis, as I said, is a combination of your strength weaknesses and opportunities and threats, right? So, uh, your strength weaknesses comes from the internal analysis and your opportunities and threats comes from your. External analysis, yeah, so you have an environmental analysis to work off it, so this is what we did so far and. The, your case has supported this with a small summary of a SWOT as well, right? Right. Let's look at the culture perspective, right? This is, I think, quite relevant and important with the case. I want you all to link much as possible and I, I would also chip in, you know, wherever it is, you know, with the, with the information available within the case itself. You know, how this culture would play a, a role in, in the future of C H L, yeah? It is understood that culture has an impact on creation of the strategy. But you need to be carefully handle culture also without jumping into conclusions, okay? So the culture influences the development of strategy, what, what they want, you could see already. People have different ideas about when you, when you're talking about acquiring the hotels and things like that, okay? So maybe the traditional thinking of do what you know, rather than, you know, try what you don't know is impacting here, right? Once you develop the standard, you need to implement it. Want to implement, you need to see whether your corporate performance is right, okay? So if your corporate performance is unsatisfied, you know, you're unsatisfactory, it is not right track, okay? All what you do is first step to take a tighter control on in the implementation part. I will give you a, a classic example onto that, okay? Say for example, you want to, with your culture, your culture is giving the the, the, you, you believe that trade, people would sell more if you give good discounts and if you give, give good price, okay, that's your culture of belief, okay? Because organizations, let's say, that's, that's what we have been operating on, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a fundamental base thing that you have been working off it, right? So you develop your strategy accordingly, you try to give them a, a trade discount or you, you, you give them you know, the more benefit to the trade or more benefit to the customers, you know, and let's say you, you are, you are implementing that particular strategy, generally ideally it's a push and a pull strategy works, yeah. First you try to fill the trade with your products, that's your push strategy. Then you do a consumer promotion for the consumers to pull it out from the trade, that's your pull strategy. Yeah, first you give a trade discount and fill it up with push strategy. Then you go with consumers for a full strategy, generally that's, that's how it works, right? So let's say you wanted to do a, a more, you want to do a push strategy first. So you're, you're giving a fantastic discount and you expected the sales to go up. You're measuring your corporate performance, it's not good. The corporate performance is not very good. Corporate performance says you are not reached your target. What do you do? You make sure, go back and make sure that the discounts are given to everyone properly. Not only very, you know, the, the people will just go and give to the people whom they know, right, first. So whether it has been implemented, check that whether it has been implemented to everyone. Because if that been given to the entire trade, that you know, they should be able to understand that, you know, it has been given to the entire trade. So check whether it has been given to everyone, tighter control. Make sure that you know the, your sales reps are, you know, will understand, they have a very good understanding of what to do. Tighter control first, check again, unsatisfied, go to the next step. Reconstruct the strategy, now you are giving it only to the what do you call, you know, the A grade outlets? You are not giving the B grade outlets, okay, now let me give to the B grade outlets also. Now you're changing your strategy a little bit. Because your development of strategy matters. Now you are looking at the new information and now you're changing it, still, you know, the sales has not picked up. Again, you go through the procedure, still you're not getting the right results. This is where you need to come and look at the, the, the culture behind that strategy. Your strategy development has been talking about the quality, but sorry, quantity, the pricing. Now probably if you actually see, it is not the matter of even with the higher discount rate, even with the better reach, that your sales has not been achieved, that means something wrong with your product. Now you might have to change your thinking, now you have to change your cultural perspective on. Now your earlier thinking was if I give a discount that people will buy, no more. Now unless you have a high quality product, people are not going to buy. So probably you had to change your strategy from cost, lower cost or the cheaper price to maybe to a differentiated or even to a hybrid situation, that is like a good quality at a lower price. We will, we will see, maybe tomorrow we can see that, how we could achieve that particularly much, yeah. So your culture would have an impact, you know, in, in whatever the achievement that you're going to work through with. You could see in, in our case, the, they've been constantly, they've been talking about these two families. Constantly they are talking about, you know, they were example. You know, how they honest each other's capabilities and build the organization. Yeah, so the, the, they were examples for the industry, yeah, organizations followed them, that kind of a situation. So they, they had a wonderful understanding in between them. Understanding and realizing their capabilities in different areas. Yeah. The Kandagama family, the, the understanding of different business perspective was there. Because one was a professor, the other one although not educated, you know, a good businessman to go off with. The third one which was involved, you know, a very open-minded person with, you know, want to be, you know, by herself and then liking towards the agricultural perspective, had no idea about the, you know, hydropower projects to work things out and you know, working on that particular perspective. And the fourth one also is a traditional engineer who knows in and out of the the, the main work, right? So they had, they had the capability of doing it. And the, you know, the Tapazan Gomez was, they were, they were businessmen. Going from a rice mill into converting that and buying over the power plant and working on it. So you know, these are the, so they come from different background, different cultures, but they worked, yeah. But from certain point onwards, it's not, they're agreeing, yeah. Different thinking, identify. Identify where, where it differs. Yeah, why, why the first, search for information, yeah. Now, something else which I want to bring it here, it's, it's the, because there's culture, there is a lot of things, but I, I would like to bring the drift part. Because it is vital, it is vital for the organizational leaders, yeah, to identify whether they are in track with the environmental changes. And that environmental changes, to be with the change, with the, a change in the environment. You know, some people would only rely on their past experience. And with that past experience, that has very big push, yeah, or very big influence on you, the, the, the changes that you take in adaptation to the environmental change is not enough. So when that age what you take, relying on your past experience is not enough, you intend to drift from where you should be. Yeah. Let's, let's, let me show it to you on a, on, 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 on a, on a graph basis, then probably you will understand it better, yeah. Before I go into that, just look at these organizations, these organizations are no more there. There are reports on failures, certain organizations have lost, they are missing in action. Yeah. Connect, yeah. Yes, no. Toys R Us, one of my favorite stores, they're, they're closed down. Come back, missing. So there are a lot of failure about the corporates. Simply because that they were not adaptable. They were not adaptable, yeah. So if I put it in a graph with your amount of change required in the time, okay? Let's see, this is the change what is happening in the environment. Change what is happening in the environment, so accordingly you also should change. The organization also should change. So what happens is at the initial stage, at the initial stage, this is the incremental stage which takes place. The purple line is the incremental stage by the organization, nothing wrong. They, they go along with the change, then they take a step change, reach the required level and they stay at the required level for some time, then again make the change and they reach the required level. Then go on, now say for example, let me give you one the supermarkets, the so-called supermarket Sri Lankan environment, yeah. When Connors, they were the first people to start, yeah, before Cargill's. Cargill's came in, in a big way, the Connors were the first supermarket to start, they could not sustain, they closed down. They were at Call Pity and then they, they had to close it down, they could not compete when Cargill's came out, yeah. Because, because, because the systems, I, I, I will tell you how it works. When waters came down, they, they they had a lot of SKUs, okay, they had a lot of SKUs, they attracted only the vehicle, the people who have the vehicle, so that means upper middle and upper class, okay, they were not entertaining others. So you, the, most of the people were having vehicles, so you don't see like now, not gather Yanagama, okay? Now of course you see, you know, it's very encouraging, now you see a, a small boy with a, you know, the, the, the shorts and a manian, maybe he does not have a, even the slippers, you just run across, go where exact five grams of sugar, give the exact change and run away, yeah? So now it's like going, you know, it's like going to the corner shop, okay? But then the things are a little bit different. So they, they knew your customers, they had only about two or three checkout counters. So they bill them manually, believe me guys, okay? They're manually, a little while, the, the crowd start coming in, of course they had enough time because you know, two, three people coming in, so they, the three, three ladies checking them out while they do it manually. Those three ladies or gentlemen who have bought the goods will have a good chat because they know each other, because they come from a quite similar society, yeah? So they don't mind waiting, you know, for about five minutes or seven minutes until they finish up, you know, adding and making errors and cutting and rewriting again and with the carbon sheets and everything, there are absolutely no problems, okay? And then probably at that time there was no card, credit card facilities, it was cash change. So they should have change and, you know, giving to the other cashier, you know, all those things can happen and you know, the those, those customers also, they, they don't care because they had all the time in the world and you know, they know, knew each other and you know, because it was very limited customers to be there. Now that could continue, that could continue, but then when, when it moved on, then people start coming. And when these people see that, you know, everything they can buy under one roof, when people start coming in, they slowly, they realize that this manual billing is not going to work, so they went on the thermal billing. Pre-programmed all, most of the goods and you know, the weight was already been there and they started just pressing buttons to add figures, yeah? Not bad, moved on, but still you had queues, you had things to work off it, just imagine if that is the case for today, if you don't change. Even now we start, now we, sometimes we complain, isn't it, like, I of course complain because I don't want to stay in the queue for, you know, I don't want the queue to be longer than five, six people, but unfortunately even you, if you see outside Sri Lanka, you know, always there's a queue at least about ten people, you know? And especially during the peak time and you know, late evenings, you, you have at least twenty people waiting in the queue, right? Typical Sri Lankan mentality is they also are the human beings, so they, they keep one person in the queue and another person do the shopping. But not like in Sri Lanka, the, the, those stores are massive, right? So it's good work for the person who is doing the shopping part and the person who, they would take turns to be in the queue, that's what we do when you go outside, right, anyway. Now we have POS made the changes, necessary changes, right? And in time to go, you could see the queue is trying its self-checkout counters. Yeah. Now, I heard the self-checkout is not normal self-checkout, is assisted self-checkout. Yeah, because suppose you don't, sometimes you don't scan your, your, your goods in your basket, yes? So for, to avoid that, there is a basket scanner now. You know, you have to bring those, bring those technologies, so on, until now, I suppose they are, they are, can, they can manage, okay? So they are probably on the incremental change yet, still, okay? So you could see that incremental change might not be helpful, it might not be helpful on the long run. This small change because the environment change is bigger, your organization starts drifting. Now, so for example, if you're looking at different types of power as your input. If you're looking at nuclear power, which is, which now most of the organizations, most of the countries are moving away. They are moving away. And they are going to depend on, you know, the natural power, yeah, natural power. And they are going to depend on, you know, the natural power, yeah, natural power. Then, you know, the, we, we can't be going back to the old technology, yeah? So if, staying with my case, staying with my supermarket incident. If we, if we don't implement certain things now, going, starting with manual and having a carbon and writing. And then, you know, getting into a thermal printing and then getting into a POS, yeah, maybe right, yeah? But then you can't be having that modified version of these POSS forever. You have to find new sources. In, mo- most of the other countries I've seen, self-checkout counters are self-checkout. The, the guys who either get, sometimes they randomly check people. Of course, every time they see us, they check us as random people, but not random, we are targeted randoms. You know, good laugh and then you go, you know, that's all you do, you know, you don't. You don't make a scene or you don't, you don't disagree with them or whatever it is, because, you know, it has been spoiled by us, no, so. Us in the sense like our people. So probably they, they, they know that, you know, they don't know the difference between the good and the bad people. So then they randomly, they checked us, yeah, so that, that's how it works, anyway. So that's your strategic drift, that's where it starts. So now you are drifting apart from where you should be, okay? You would have been here. You would have been at this particular point, but unfortunately you are ending here. So now this is your gap is being created, yeah? That gap is your strategic drift to go on with, right? And then what happens, you start going on the flux stage, right? You start rotating in one place, yeah, you start being in one place, right? Then from there. Now the gap is really too much. Yeah, now you could, you could see that's now really the gap has become almost double. Yeah, so you are not constant, you are not looking into anything. Now this is where the flux stage will, I'll explain to you later in a little while, then either you. Die, you are finished, yeah? Or you might have to do a leap jump, then continue a journey. Look for a transformational. Yeah, you look for a transformational change and then continue a journey. Or you need to close down. Right, so this is what could happen if you don't. Look into your culture and if you do. Properly manage your culture, yeah? So as I said, the incremental stage, you, you will do the small, small changes. Because you don't want to upset the apple cart, okay? So if it is not broken, you don't want to fix it. Unfortunately, that's the worst mentality. But the Japanese mentality is, even if it is not broken, you keep on improving, yeah? Small capabilities around your strong, you make some experiments around your strong capabilities, yeah? I will explain to you all when I take the example. And, and also, obviously, you can do this because your, your environment is stable. We know that our environment is not stable at all, we are not in a stable position, okay? So we need to be very careful when, to follow this incremental change method. The drift, as I said, it will come because of the core rigidities, number one. Because we don't want to change, we have been happy with their past success. Oh, we have been producing and, you know, we are very good with the ministers, we have, the president congratulates us. Of taking over this company and, you know, bringing in new things, we are very good, but they can go. But we, we rely on certain aspects and we stay on, we don't want to see the change. We don't want to see what is happening around, we believe that they are still there. Unfortunately, we know that they can't be there. Yeah, people can change. So the core rigidities might set in, so something that we have, we don't want to lose it, yeah? Lack of foresight sufficient. Is that happening at CHL? Are they, are they not concentrating on what they should be doing? Is the diversification what they are taking is unrelated diversification becoming a conglomerate as it. Will it prove unhealthy? Fundamental questions that you need to ask. They're taking a diversification strategy, they're using the diversification and totally unrelated diversification and. Will that be right? Is it the right time to do it? Some people will stick to the familiar, you, you don't want to move. I'm very happy. I don't know, I wonder if you all remember a, a, a product called Encyclopedia Britannica. Encyclopedia Britannica is, you know, it's like your Wikipedia. Where you could, you, you would know. You can, you can get enough information about certain thing, yeah, so that Encyclopedia Britannica. Was a twenty-one volume book, which, which was published and which was very famous until nineteen nineties. Nineteen nineties, we saw two things happening in the world. Two things dramatically changed the world. Number one is your CDs. Number one is your CDs, because prior to that, you had only one point four four MB of capacity, okay? CDs had how much, seven sixty or seven eighty, so you can see the, the size of it and the difference, it's like, you know. Seven hundred fold of saving the document, right? That's number one, number two, the internet. The internet. It's linked. So the books went off demand. Internet was available. Encyclopedia didn't even realize that this will impact them. Because this is nothing on the book industry, no, nothing on the printing industry, no? This is about the storage and computers and nothing, they didn't even know that, you know, that, that lack of foresight, very. But they didn't even understand that how this is going to impact them. So what they did, they stick to the familiar and they started printing more volumes and trying to sell, nothing worked. Because their closest rival, who was Encarta. Okay, probably that might strike your name, now, you know, Encarta, Encyclopedia Britannica, all have their websites. The Encarta immediately shifted because Encyclopedia Britannica was occupying ninety percent of the market share. And Encarta had only about five to six percent. And the rest was managed by so many other brands, yeah? So ninety percent of the volume was by Encyclopedia Britannica. So just imagine like, you know, the, the way they would have been kings, right, ninety percent of market share. So this, this is, this, this, uh, Encarta quickly realized that, you know, they can't beat Encyclopedia Britannica on the printing. Let, so they quickly took their chance and moved into digital. So they released the CDs for sixty dollars. Sixty to seventy dollars, they released the CDs. What did the Encyclopedia Britannica team say? Oh, these are kids' toys, they will just throw it away. No, they were not throwing, they were making use of it. They were selling at two thousand dollars and these guys are selling at sixty dollars a CD now. So then they started doing a, a experiment around their core capabilities. Remember, I said, I will explain to you, what they did was they gave a CD ROM free without pictures. If they buy the two thousand dollar one, come on, who is going to fall for that? Nineteen ninety-five, they had to close down, zero sales. It took five years for them to realize that, you know, they are not in the right track. Nobody wanted to buy them, it was up for sale. Nineteen ninety-six, a, a, a person who bought it for the book value. So that means not for the face value, you know, and they, they, they didn't even bother about the Encyclopedia Britannica name. Yeah, so it's like, for example, if you have the Coca-Cola, nobody wants the Coke brand. Everybody wants the bottling plant. So same way, the guy also wanted the printing, you know, the equipment and things like that. So he bought it for the, just for the book value, which had no value, because this printing has been there since eighteen seventy-three. Not bad, yeah, three hundred old, three hundred old, old organization collapsed in five years' time. Simply because they could not identify these changes. Because they were worried about the relationships also, you know, these people are sending us, you know, the. People are supplying the materials, what they will be thinking, they have been doing with our forefathers. Absolutely, it was difficult for them to diagnose the, the legs, what, what you see. The, the connection between the internet and CD ROMs and how it will impact them. So read through, I have given explanation of what, what we discussed. The flux stage. You start running in same place. You start running in same place. Yeah, you start finger pointing at each other. You lose focus on the direction what you want to take, yeah? The people leave, and now, is that the situation at CHL also? You have to answer that, okay? Management is leaving. But they are doing okay. But still management wants to leave for a certain reason. Think about it, okay? Pressure from outside, do they have any pressure from outside? Internal rivalries coming up? Boardroom arguments? Kanakam family wants to leave? But they would be being a, a different person in the Kanakam family would stay, hmm, interesting, isn't it? Finally, the inevitable. Company may die. Or sold off. Or even divided. Merge with the rivalry. Yeah, so anything could happen, because, you know, somebody wants to, somebody is not interested. Or it may be reorganized, yeah? And take a leap jump. Large-scale organizational change, yeah, has to, has to be there. So that's, that's, that's what would happen if you don't understand the change properly. Yeah. Right. So. Guys, I will be stopping at this particular point before I. Stop, let me quickly summarize what we did. We started off by looking at the external environment and our internal environment to identify, you know, the factors would influence us. Then we, we saw that, you know, we can do up a SWOT analysis to identify what's our strength, weakness, opportunities and threats. Probably we can make use of that SWOT to create the TOSS matrix, which we will be doing tomorrow. To identify what the strategies to go on with, that's one. Then we did identify how the culture would have an impact with, in, in our decision-making. And the type of changes that you need, need to look forward for. You know, with the environmental changes taking place and how culture might hinder that, right? So that's, that's where we, we are stopping today. And we'll be looking at the business level, corporate level in a more detailed manner. We'll be looking at the international as well, because the case talks about international as well for a certain extent. So we'll be looking into that particular perspective as well, yeah? Right, so I would stop for this particular moment and I will see you all tomorrow. Tomorrow we will start, not at nine, we will start at nine thirty, okay? So give me, after a break, after a late, we'll start, but then we will finish off one other time. One, one thirty, one thirties, plus we might finish it off, because it depends on. The questions and, you know, the discussion that we might have the end of the session. So plan yourself, guys, so late lunch tomorrow being Sunday. I know you all like to finish this also, but. Push for, push for that, a little bit late lunch, so tell to your people that, you know. A little bit late lunch, or even you all can have lunch while listening to this. But then make sure that your, your focus is on this, not on your food, yeah? Or one thirty, after that enjoy your food, right? So thank you so much for being here, I'll see you tomorrow at nine thirty, right? Thank you, guys. Yes, Chamada, I will send a, a, a pass, PPTs to. To Arna, he will do that.